All right, the time is 3:02 PM and I call the May 17th, 2023 working session to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Here.
Commissioner Labar.
Present.
Commissioner Light. Commissioner Machewski. Commissioner Robbie.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Sumner.
Here. All right, do we have a report from the county administrator?
No report this evening, Madam Chair.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, public comment. Um, backtracking, um, we will now allow time for public comment at this portion of the meeting. You will get one minute to address this body. You'll have more time later if you stick around for our regular 7:00 PM meeting. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to give public comment at this time? Seeing none, do we have anyone online? All right, moving on, um, report from the Board of Commissioners liaison.
No report, Chair, sorry for the newbie mistake.
No, you're all good, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to discussion items and the only item on the agenda today is our priorities and policy retreat and we have Karen here to help facilitate that.
Hello. Hello, everyone, thank you for having me with you. Um, I hope everyone have it has a packet for the retreat portion of the meeting today. Um, we are going to work specifically on the strategic priorities that were discussed in the April working session. Going to gain additional insight and clarity as it relates to those priorities, but I wanted to start with a check-in. Treat this like a retreat where you're going to do a little work on the health and communication strategies of the team in addition to the topics at hand. So if you would flip to the backside of your agenda, your packet is two-sided, you will see there's a check-in worksheet for you. So I'm hoping that each of you can share a little bit with us, what's something you look forward to every spring and why? What someone knowing here knows about you? And then if you would tell us from your perspective as a commissioner, what's working? Where do you feel good about the impact we're making? And what's not working or where do we have an opportunity to make a bigger impact? And then it will help me as your facilitator, if you can share with me, what are your expectations for this retreat this afternoon? So I'll give you a minute to work on that and then we'll start with whoever's feeling brave. All right, let's take about one more minute and then we'll start with whoever's feeling brave and go to the left. All right, who'd like to start? Thank you, Justin.
Try to show Commissioner Scott, I am paying attention over here, I got my listening ears on.
That's right.
So I don't know if this technically spring or summer, uh, you know, changes or doesn't change. Uh, my dog's birthday is June 5th and pre-pandemic, it's spring, it's so spring? Yeah, yeah, so we'll do like a doggy birthday party for him, um, typically we try, so hopefully we can still do that this year. Yeah, he's gonna be four, you know, good old Benny. Something no one else knows about you, this is a hard question for a bunch of us that have to run for office where you can like, you know, look at our website for things, but I think I have one. Uh, up until or through high school, I wanted to be a math teacher, did not go in that direction at all, went into social work instead. And now I try to avoid math when I can. Uh, what's working and what do we, what are we feeling good about, about our impact? I think we all mostly work really well together and I think our values are largely aligned. I think we could benefit from some more focus, uh, which leads into expectations for the session. I'll go back to the not working piece, I didn't skip that. Uh, but I think that one of my expectations for the session is, uh, helping us be able to get some clarity on particular things that we can move forward on within the term. Uh, to go back to the question about what's not working and where can we have a bigger opportunity for impact? I think one of the challenges and, and you know, we do this, some version of this every term, and I find it has limited effectiveness because we have two-year terms. So then once you get every two years is typically you get at least one new commissioner every time and then we end up doing this again. So new voices get added to the picture and then we have to figure out how do we move forward on some of those priorities? That'll change after the next, the next election when we're running for four-year terms. And I think priority setting would be easier then, but I think that, uh, whatever we've been trying to come, come up with concrete, uh, priorities that move forward on has been a thing that hasn't really been working so well. So hopefully that can change.
All right, thank you, we're going to the left.
All right, all the way down, okay. Yep, yep, all right. So my favorite thing about spring is birds chirping. Um, I like when the birds return, I have like a family of birds that come back to my patio every year, I'm pretty sure it's the same family every year. Um, and then I changed my something about me because you inspired me, I was gonna say something not as cool, but I actually wanted to be an interior designer until like I enrolled in community college and then I went down a different path. Um, and then what's working, similar to my friend to the right of me. Um, I think that we all share similar values, um, and care about moving the county forward. Um, and then I think where we could, um, have an opportunity to make an in bigger impact is just, um, I think government's really hard for people to navigate, so I'm always looking for ways that we can improve, um, relationships with community members that, um, aren't like super tapped in to local government, but also with, um, local partners who are kind of in and kind of understand all of the processes and red tape, but could use some more help. Um, and then my expectations for this session is, uh, I'm new, I'm one of three new commissioners. Um, and a lot, um, happened the term before this and so I'm, I'm hoping that this session can help with some clarity about direction and, um, provide an opportunity for some of the new voices to provide, um, additional input on, on how we would like to see things proceed, so that's all for me, thank you.
Greg's not going?
Greg should go, I encouraged him to do that, Greg? You don't even want to tell us what you're looking forward to every spring?
No, I don't.
Every spring Greg looks, every spring Greg looks forward to not answering that question. I will go.
I will say that I do enjoy the spring, it, it puts me in the mind of things anew and it's an opportunity for us to reset. Uh, and it is a segue into golf season.
That's right.
There we go, good answer, thank you. What's something we don't know about you? That, that's the one I'm most interested.
He's not answering that one.
Something that you all don't know about me, uh, that I had got a, I had a tryout for the Detroit Pistons.
That's a good fun fact.
Like that's two truths and a lie, is it?
Be clear, it was a one-day tryout where they invite people from the community, but I thought it was a cool thing.
That's a fun fact, that is a fun fact.
I know they went a lot, had a lot more championships under their belt had you been drafted.
No question about it.
All right, um, well, do I look forward to every spring? Well, I wrote a few things down, first thing is that along the lines of what our chair just spoke about, uh, this morning I saw a butterfly on my porch. And I think it had just come, come out of its thing, chrysalis. Cause it was just like starting to like spread its wings a little bit and like get a feel for like what was going on, it was like one of those big yellow ones.
Magical.
Magical, so springtime, um, also wearing this jacket, fun perk of springtime, I don't usually wear this in the winter, it's more of a spring jacket. Also my birthday, June 9th, when you were talking about your dog's birthday, reminded me of my birthday.
Okay.
9th, so there you go, springtime. Um, what is something that no one here knows about me? Well, there, there's a, a lot, but what I will tell you is I don't know if anybody knew this or not, but, well, actually on the lines of what you guys were saying of your, what you wanted to be as kids. I also had dreams as a child of what I wanted to be and I wanted to really badly be a sanitation worker. I was enamored with garbage collection and I would watch every day, every week, I would run out to the window and watch the garbage get picked up. It was like the most fascinating thing for me, um, so that's what I wanted to be as a kid was a sanitation worker. Um, also fun fact about me, I never went to seventh grade. Oh. Never went to seventh grade and that was because, other fun fact about me, I lived in France for four years and I was held back a grade when I moved there and then skipped a grade when I came back and so never went to seventh grade.
We just insulted people.
Yeah, we did. Okay, and then what is working? I agree with the chair that our relationship as a board, I think we work well together, I think that's working, our interpersonal relationship. What is not working, I feel like we could be more impactful at the state level. Uh, at passing, you know, legislation, getting things in the state budget. And I would like to see us, uh, you know, be more intentional about that kind of stuff. I think we're in an opportunity right now to get some really cool stuff done, so. Expectations for the session, um, I'd like to, you know, just, I, I, I'd like to get a better understanding of the direction that we're going as a body. Um, I think that from a policy perspective, um, I do think that, again, building the relationships that we have obviously would be important, but we already have pretty good relationships. So seeing, you know, what, what direction we're heading in, um, I think is what I'm hoping to get out of it, so.
Thank you. Okay, I have a lot of things written down, which is not surprising because I was an English professor. Okay, um, something I look forward to every spring and why? Um, I just look forward to the sun coming back to the state, I think that's like huge, I get so tired of every day being gray, I say that I hate winter, but probably actually what I hate is gray sky. Um, and so sunshine and I also really look forward to not wearing coats. It's such a small thing, but I hate bundling up in coats and driving around and then feeling hot and nauseous in my car because I have a coat on and so really like not wearing a coat and the heat. Um, that's summer, but, uh, I don't put my air conditioning on, even though I have central air, I prefer to sweat the summer away and really the thing I most look forward to every spring is the forsythia blooming, um, because it's the first flower that comes out in the spring and they're so bright and yellow. And, uh, they also, I'm gonna try not to cry, they also remind me of my grandma, um, who I was very close to. And she had a whole line of forsythia along one side of her fence in her yard and she'd always cut off branches and bring them over to me to put in a big vase in my room. And so the forsythia to me is just like my grandma talking to me again every year when they come out, okay, I'm crying anyway. Um, what's something nobody here knows about you? I don't know if y'all know this, but you know I have a son. Um, but you may not know that that son is my partner's egg and I carried him. So, um, he's a unique child in many ways and, uh, sometimes people are like, oh, he looks just like you and I'm like, he's actually not genetically at all me, even though he came out of my body. Um, he's a good kid. Uh, what's working and where are you feeling good about our impact? Right as this meeting started, Catherine came over and updated me on some programs that we've given funding for, for homes for generations and keeping people in homes and like had some like beautiful success stories to tell me, like that's a very tangible thing that was good for me to hear, um, because I think we can all feel like sometimes like where are we getting the impact? And hearing from our treasurer about some of those programs helped. I think we also, on a broader sense and less granular, have concerns about, um, equity in our county and want to do what we can to make that better. And we all want Washington to be forward, I don't want to say be better because I think we're pretty good. And so, but I think we want to move the county forward, we want to continue seeing a forward trajectory and we don't want to slide backwards on things and that's something I think everybody here really wants. Um, what's not working, where do we have an opportunity to make bigger impact? I think, um, this goes to one of my board priorities, but I think we could streamline our process for human services. Um, we have expectations and partnerships with some of the nonprofits, but we don't have a clear way to show or provide them with the funding that they need. So for example, we ask SOS to do certain services for the county, but we don't guarantee any kind of funding or have a clear way for them to have that funding that they need. Um, and expectations for the session? I don't know where we'll go with like the session and what, how we're going to talk about these things, but I think that philosophically, I think it would be good if we could come out of the session and have, um, some sort of discussion about what we feel the role of county government is. And, and each of us understand, have that understanding for ourselves and understand what our colleagues on the board think the role of county government is. I think that would add, um, a nice backdrop to our priorities and what we think we want the county to do. And I think that it would help us have more consensus and awareness of each other's priorities if we had that kind of idea of our own philosophical underpinning about county government and our colleagues. Thank you. There you go.
Great, I guess I follow that. All right, um, in the spring, what I look forward to the most is gardening, I'm an avid gardener. I love getting my hands in the soil and the dirt and growing things, whether it be, you know, vegetables or flowers. whether it be, you know, vegetables or flowers. Absolutely love that. I also look forward to the tractors every spring. I'm a big tractor fan. So when you get stuck behind a tractor, I'm the one that's happy because I like seeing them out there working. I'm not the one honking the horn at them. Um, something that people don't know about you, probably people know this. Um, but I'm trained as a pastry chef, so that's not my day job. I might just forget that. I am a train.
It was my first job.
It was my, um, yeah, yeah. Breads, cakes, cookies, that's me. Um, for me, uh, what I think we're really good at, I think we're good at being responsive. We're not the type of board where we tend to just keep kicking the can. React to things as timely as possible, um, and I think in a very good way. Um, at our level of government, I also feel that we work really well looking at the county as a whole and addressing issues from border to border, not necessarily. Obviously, we're looking at the issues that are in specific areas, addressing issues throughout. Uh, I also think we're good at collaborating with um each other and other entities. Uh, things, I just feel like we could make a bigger impact on. I don't think it's necessarily not working, but just places we could grow. Uh, getting out more into the community. We had this session in Celine this last week and it went so well. And there were so many other local municipalities that attended and it was just a really good collaboration. So the more that we can do that. Also, spreading what we do to residents, and I don't mean this by like tooting our own horn. I mean, letting them know what's available, what we provide. I have so many that will say, I didn't know that that was available. I didn't know that I, that resource was here. So just kind of getting that information out there. Also, I think we could expand on our collaboration, and I say this from being part of the Michigan Works Board, is that it's just such a wonderful, grand, large group of people that comes together that works on a common goal. Um, but being able to do that where it's government, for-profit, nonprofit, all at the same table, having these conversations um is really impactful. Uh, for me, I'd just like to get together and realize that um for this session, that we're all focusing on a lot of common issues that again spread throughout the county and that we can work toward small goals that have a really big impact when we meet each one of those single smaller goals. And then finding common threads that connect all of the issues that we face.
Thank you.
All right. What do I look forward to every spring? So I get up and walk my dogs at six thirty in the morning every day, and I look forward to not having to wear a winter coat to do that. Or put on a hat and an extra pair of like snow pants. Save myself five minutes of getting ready to do that. Um, and just the ability to be outside, you know, and, and go out on the border to border trail and enjoy that without having to have five layers of clothing. Um, what is something here that no one knows about you? I, I, I answer this question a lot through work because of various like leadership things that we go to. So I hope I haven't said this in this environment before. This is not shocking or anything. I was at Woodstock ninety-four. I was in grad school. I'm sorry? No, ninety-four. Ninety-nine was the bad one. Ninety-nine was the battle. Ninety-four was the twenty-fifth anniversary one. So I, I attended. That was one with Green Day and the throwing of the sod, yes. I was not throwing the sod, the Green Day event. Um. What do I think is working? Uh, I think we have a lot of open and honest discussion about human services. And I think we are very conscious of that. Um, I think that we've been very conscious about the potential impact of the ARPA funds that we have. And I feel really good about the impact that we're having with those, with those dollars. And I think I feel very good about the process that we've gone through. I think we've done, from what I see of other local governments, an exceptional job of doing outreach and getting input from the community, not only on ARPA, but on a lot of different issues. I think we're very conscious of that. And I think that's a characteristic, characteristic of Washington County government that maybe we model for other governments, not from our area. What is not working? I think, when I think back about the previous two times I participated in this process, we come up with a lot of priorities and a lot of ideas. And which is a good thing, but I also think that leads us to not addressing some of those things. Or maybe trying to focus on too many things uh, and not making progress on a lot of it. Um, although we do a lot of work here. And I also think that for me, um, and Commissioner Beeman touched on this, the idea of doing more outreach is really important to me and is something that we can improve on. The, the idea of making constituents and county residents and stakeholders more aware of what county government does and what's available to people. Um, I think that there's room for improvement there as well. And I'm, I'm also interested in how we can better connect to other local leaders and hear from them and hear what they're experiencing at the municipal level as well. Under expectations for the session, I wrote one word, and that's understanding. And I think that, for me, that's understanding maybe better of who the individuals are around this table, and I'm not including just the elected officials in the room. Um, understanding who they are and where they're coming from and maybe why they think certain things about issues. Um, in addition to the general discussion about, you know, just what, what people's priorities are. Now, at the end, I want to add that Commissioner Robbie, I had the same goal when I was a youngster about being a sanitation worker. Um, so I was fascinated with the garbage trucks that would come down the street and I would fill up my toy bucket and I'd empty it out on the couch. And that was, so now I feel I have this connection to you about this.
I emptied mine in my brother's crib.
Ah, well. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Cheryl LeBarre.
All right, um. I will uh, kind of run through these here in terms of what I look forward to every spring. Um, Greg and I both uh, have a, a, a passion for, for golf. Uh, I think more specifically though, I look forward to April first because that is, as I'm sure everybody at this board table knows, the opening season for when you can post your golf scores for handicap purposes. I, I don't think anybody knew that aside from Greg, but um, what's something that folks don't know about me? Um, I have both seen uh, the Wu-Tang Clan in concert in Detroit. And I have also visited the former Woo Ware store on Staten Island. And I, I, I don't lead with that in the community always, but I, I should, yes. Um. I, I think there's any number of reasons to celebrate the Wu-Tang Clan's cultural contributions, yes. Uh, so I, I appreciated Governor Whitmer there. That was a, their, their joint tour with Nas though. So just to throw that out there. Um, what's working? I, I, I wrote out the, the, the provision of and successful outcomes from services from the county in the overall context of human services with the acknowledgement that success is not uniform. And since we have some level of uh, ability to add uh, additional comment, basically, when, when we, when we can get the service to the recipient in the context of human services, I would put our county up against any in the nation, even the mighty King County out in Seattle. Um, I think we do a fantastic job and I, and I believe in the, in the people that make that happen. The, the what's not working part, I think, is the translation of what we say in this room and believe both collectively and individually and within the organization in terms of um, our vision for expanding human services. And translating that into something that is actionable in, 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 in terms of getting it from theory to product. And, and I don't mean product in a, in a crass way, but I mean to the recipient, to the community, to the uh, the problem we seek to address. Um, so I, I, I say all that not uh, as a comment on any competency, mainly on a, on a comment of just too much to do in this world in the context of county government. And I would love to um, it, take up Commissioner Scott's point about what is the role of county government? I've, I've described it as a shield in the past. It's, it's basically uh, what prevents the worst outcome at the last moment in a lot of instances. Or uh, that's why, as I've said to Greg, uh, when stuff hits the fan, the county cleans it up. And, and that's uh, unfortunately, the case many times uh, at the last moment. So my expectations for this session, um, I've, I've committed to Commissioner Somerville to be uh, my best behavior here today, and I will do that. Um, all I can expect is the creation of some actionable list of uh, goals to achieve for this term. And those could be outcomes, they could be discussions. Uh, but if the nine of us can walk out with a, with a common document, uh, that, that would be success in my eyes.
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate you taking the time to do that as a group. I think it's obvious you learned some things about each other and you have these points of connection that you didn't even know existed before. And that's really important as we begin to talk about meaningful and consequential issues this afternoon. All right, so one of the things that Commissioner Somerville and I talked about as we were preparing for this session was really building upon the discussion you had in the working session in April, where you identified six areas where you wanted to focus on strategic priorities. There was some discussion, I believe she asked you to, if you had the opportunity to, to listen to the recording of that meeting, um, where you had some brief initial conversation in each of those six areas. Today, we have an opportunity to really dig a little bit deeper into each of those areas. So we have about three more hours, last thirty-minute meal break. So two and a half hours for six topics. So I want to kind of keep us on track. I'll be doing a little timekeeping, but we'll go through them one at a time. But what I'm hoping that we'll do for each of them is we'll analyze using metrics where we can, how we're going to prioritize, and that will help to Commissioner LeBarre's point, how do we operationalize this vision that we have for priorities? So if you flip to the next page in your agenda packet, it should say at the top, RICE, Reach, Impact, Confidence, and Effort. So here's a sample measure of the RICE decision-making model. It's a tool that leadership teams often use when they need to sort through an enormous pile of priorities and decide what truly needs their focus. This is based on the premise that if everything's important, nothing is. So we have to really decide where we want to focus our priorities and how are we going to define what success looks like. So how we're going to do that, we're going to talk about each of the six strategic priority areas. And then at the end of the discussion of the individual priority area we're talking about, I'm going to ask you to use the RICE model to help vote. So we'll hear from each commissioner, but for example, under human service delivery, you're going to ask you to help us decide what's the right measure for reach. So the key on this is what percentage of residents or what percentage of the target population that we're hoping to serve with human services will be reached with the priority we're talking about. So if you think it's ninety to a hundred percent, you would rate that a three. If you think it's fifty to eighty percent, you'd rate it a two. If you think it's twenty-five to fifty percent, you'd rate it a one and so on. Then we'd look at what's the impact, what level of impact, how much does this move the needle or the metrics in this area that we're looking for? And then the key there is massive impact, high impact, medium impact, low impact, no impact. Then the next category is confidence. What's our confidence in our assumptions around this, the data we have and our ability to execute the plans that we're talking about? And then the last is the effort. What's needed there in terms of labor, human resources, or financial resources? So this is just one way for us to begin to organize our thoughts around this. It's not meant to be an absolute. It's meant to guide our discussion and help us prioritize. So with that, I'd like to spend the next. Oh, yes, yes, please. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
All right, ju- just to clarify, when, especially on reach?
Yeah.
Do you want us to answer that in terms of sort of aspirationally what we would like? Or what we think right now is the percentage of the population impacted or? Wh- wh- what, how should we answer that one? Is it aspirational or is it what we think is happening?
No, I think that's something that needs to come out in the discussion. Is what, what we're talking about is the plan that we're discussing. Is it aspirational or do we feel like we have a fairly good sense of what the immediate impact would be? Or the impact within the term period?
Okay.
So I would say we're looking at the period for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. I would use that timeframe in terms of what you think the reach might be. So I'd like to spend the next twenty minutes talking about human service delivery. So what you have in your packet is you have the slides from the April working session where we talked about what the responses were specifically in that area. And I'd like to entertain any questions, thoughts, or suggestions as it relates to what would help you be able to assess this strategic priority using the RICE model. Yeah. Okay, so you have in your packet, you have the slides that we've used on April's, in the April working session around promote and improve human services delivery. So using the information here and the discussion from them, what else would you like to talk about that would help you be able to rate that as a priority today?
I think one of the challenges with trying to rice this, if we can use it as a verb.
Yep.
Uh, would be that it's not just us providing human services. A lot of this is us investing in providers that do that work, and we can't be the only entity investing in those providers to do it. It's just not possible. We don't have the, the, the county government alone can't do that.
Right.
So then we would have to figure out, and I think to Commissioner Scott's point earlier around philosophically, or just thinking about what are the parameters that we're going to be operating under for each of these, how much are we willing to do? And for that, I think we could rice it and determine what the impact would be. But I think if we don't have that kind of conversation and we just, uh, you know, like leave everybody else off the hook for investing in human services in our community, we're always going to be fighting a losing battle.
Yeah. So it sounds like part of that priority for you includes formalizing those collaborations or understanding the nature of those partnerships more fully.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I think the other idea that came up, Commissioner LeBarre mentioned this several meetings ago around this idea of what we had coordinated funding before, which we don't have. And then this idea of thinking about coordinated spending and trying to have some sort of conversation around. If we know that United Way, for example, is going to invest in X, Y, and Z at Level A, then do we need to also invest in that same area? And if so, at what level would be appropriate for us to do that kind of investment? Or, or do we need to come to some sort of a arrangement that or this organization is not going to invest in the housing and homelessness crisis? And that's something that they're leaving to us, and then we're going to have to do it. But we can count on some of these other organizations to invest in other areas so we can leave those off our plate.
Right, and so each of those organizations that you mentioned, whether it's the Shelter Association or the United Way, they have their own set of strategic priorities. So I guess one of the questions I'm, I'm hearing you say is, do we know what those are? And does that align with what we're discussing today?
The answer to that is no, right? I mean, we, we don't have a, a great sense of that, which makes it very challenging for us to, to do planning around this particular area.
Okay.
And because we're the public body involved in that work, when there are failures or uh, we're not meeting the community standard, or our community as a whole is not meeting the community standard, we hear about it because we're the public body that people can come engage with. But when But when, you know, the private foundations don't get that, I mean, that's not their role and they don't have that level of, of access or provide that level of access, which again is another challenge.
Yeah. Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, I'll just add, I think, at least from what I can remember from our last conversation around this, there also is, I think, an interest, um, both when we submitted our priorities and in recent conversations around housing and homelessness, trying to reengage people around some sort of like funding coordination because it's too big for us alone to do it. So, um, I think hopefully some of that is what we'll talk about here. I know there's at least a handful of people interested in that. Um, what it looks like, I don't know. Um, there are some like bigger partners that used to be involved in human service funding in the county with us, and that doesn't exist anymore. Um, some of the agencies, it's like very clear. You can look on their website and see what their, um, goals and mission are. And you can read their annual reports. Um, so I think it depends on which, like what agencies you're looking at. And then when you're thinking, when we're thinking about like some of the old partners, um, that's where it's less clear. Like I, I don't know how much money United Way or Saint Joe's Health System wants to invest in housing and homelessness. Um, I, I know that University of Michigan is focused on that, but it's like unclear to me like how focused in terms of like financial support. So I think that's something that like, it would make sense for the county to facilitate since we're the, we're the county, but I, I think it, it's clear to at least me that we need to pull partners, old partners back in and new partners in to really meet the need that we have.
Commissioner Scott.
Yeah, I think that's tr- true, uh, Commissioner Somerville. At like, I think that that's like, uh, I think probably Commissioner Labar and I have both been saying this. I really, I mean, I ten thousand times believe that we need some kind of leadership to, to get all the entities who are funding nonprofits in the county together to understand the coordinated spending, so to speak. We also need to understand what nonprofits we've asked to work with the county to help us do our services. And so we have that knowledge very clearly. It was news to me about some of the work that we have asked, in particular SOS to do as part of the county. Like we have gone to them as the county and asked them to do work. We should be funding that work. So I would like to understand in a clear way of who we've asked to help us with this work and then what we think is our ethical responsibility in helping them fund that work when we've asked them to help us. It's difficult for me in this, uh, rubric of talking about reach for human service delivery because I want a hundred percent reach to all those who need it. But that's not a hundred percent of the target of the county or even understanding what the target population is. I think the problem is, is that we are missing a lot of variables to try to be able to put something into a rubric like this. So I, I mean, I can just go back to talking about what, what is here on this, what we talked about in April. I think that, um, like I, I don't remember if that first one was me, that Kofu iteration, or if that was Commissioner Labar. It could have, it's maybe both of us because I think it was, it was similar. I think I had a similar point later. So I, I, I don't know. I guess I'm saying it's difficult for me to think about how I rice some of this because I think we're far away from that.
Yeah, maybe it's, it's amending what's on the slide to the comments that you've shared so far, which is about how do we begin to put in a leadership infrastructure to coordinate the funders' spending and understand also where that money is being spent. Yeah, Justin.
Sorry. I'll look at you to, with the raised hand instead of the, the chair. Uh, you're running the show now.
All right.
Uh, so, you know, part of the conversation too around this is I don't want us to get caught up talking about du- just the dollars that we're putting into the system and not think about outcomes. Because if we get into this, you know, contest of well, the county is putting X in. And I mean, you'll hear the number a lot that in April, we put five point eight million with the housing and home, and homelessness and human services sector. But are we getting the outcomes that we want? Ultimately, that's the thing that I think we need to be talking about. If we're going to use this rice model effectively, the, the impact piece and thinking about what outcomes are we looking for? And is there a way for us to decide our level of investment based on that and our level of investment relative to what other funders might be doing? But so for me, I really want us to figure out and think about the outcomes piece, less about the money. Cause like we could dump bags of cash and to avoid and not get any outcomes, but still, still say we spent however many millions.
Correct. When I think about the expectations that you all shared in terms of the time together this afternoon, what multiple parties said was, I'd like to walk away with an actionable plan. So what I've heard you say is you want a leadership consortium, you want measurable outcome standards that you want to understand more about where the dollars are coming from and where they're being spent. And we think about that in terms of the term we're talking about, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four term. What do you all think is realistic to accomplish in this area in that time? Yes.
Um, I, I think it's realistic to, to provide that audit. Um, and I think it's realistic to, uh, do two things. One is, uh, convene all the entities that are relevant, and that's primarily, obviously, the county, uh, to some degree, some of our municipal partners, uh, and, and some key, uh, nonprofit and, and private entities that were part of the old coordinated funding system. Um, and then the service providers, big and small. Uh, and, and, and just see if we can hammer out, do we all have the same view of where we're at right now, post dissolution of coordinated funding? And post beginning of implementation of new human services partnership? Do, do we all think we're looking at the same landscape right now? If we had that internal audit to say, here's what we still do, here's how it impacts externally and within the organization. And we had that convening of the group, uh, sort of that, that global group, um, for the next eighteen months. I, I think that would be the most realistic, but I would use it to try and set up that, that iteration that is all ultimately the, the, the product I personally would like to see, which is a, a, a parallel stand-up structure that mimics some of coordinated funding did, uh, to work in tandem with new human services partnership. Um, because I, I think, as best I can say it in a useful way for this discussion, to me, that next iteration of coordinated funding would be more about, we're going to do these things because they need doing. And they are largely responsive to, to conditions and needs that we don't always impact. And we're going to use NHSP because we are trying to be impactful in terms of how we provide, how we respond to certain things. And we're trying to get improved outcomes, particularly in the context of race, positive poverty and trauma. Um, and so have those, those two distinctions and, and give those two, uh, parallel structures ample support and clarity of purpose. That, that, that would be a, a dream outcome to me to be able to achieve, uh, that in the next eighteen months. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Um, everything that he just said, and like just thinking of that bigger conversation, I think it needs to be facilitated by somebody else, um, in a way to do what we're doing here, but specifically with human services in the county. So, um, yes, everything that Andy just said.
Commissioner Scott.
I was just going to say, I feel like that's something we can do. We did it. We did an iteration of that. Um, when we talked about Gelman with people who were involved in the Gelman process. It, um, I don't think it needs to be quite as unwieldy as it was, um, but, but, I mean, maybe not even to start. I mean, maybe it could be a public meeting eventually, but I think like, and I mean, there's pros and cons to having it be in a public meeting. You might not get buy-in from some of the people who aren't public entities to come to those meetings. You might not get your health systems who necessarily want to be at that meeting talking about the funding that they do. I'm not singling out any one health system, any health system. Um, you might not get, um, United Way coming to that. You might not get some of the private foundations that do funding. But I do think one hundred percent that we need to have that coordinated and we need to have part of that audit that Commissioner Labar is talking about, and we need to understand I, as part of that, who we've asked to do work for us. And we need to have a clear understanding of what these organizations are that do that work, what their match is for their grants. And we need to then also have an understanding of the metrics that they're using for evaluation also. That's, I agree one hundred percent is like, if we could have a system in place that was solid at the end of this term to have that coordinated funding in some iteration back that addresses the things that Commissioner Labar talked about, that, that, that would be ideal.
Thank you. Commissioner Hod.
Thank you. I don't know that it has to be an external facilitator that does that work. I mean, I think this is going to be a longer term issue, right? We're gonna, we're not going to solve this problem in one go. We're going to have to continue working at it. I wonder if we should be, we, we've touched on this over the last couple of years about thinking about bringing back like a planning department or, or having a team on board that can do that. So we don't always have to look, uh, outside for facilitation on those kinds of things. Nothing against you doing outside facilitation. It's great. I just mean like a longer term for these kinds of projects. We want to be able to plan for that and have a longer term vision that's, uh, like internal and that we have people constantly working on. Just in my opinion.
Yes, please.
I need to get my hand up quicker because Chairman Hod is saying the things I want to say. So, um, I, I simply wanted to add that for me, I very much agree with the idea that Commissioner Scott pointed out that if we can get to the end of this term and we have some new kind of model, new kind of structure, um, I think that's attainable and doable and achievable. Um, for me, this is very much a, I look at this very much as over a long term. This is not something we're going to get the outcomes and results and objectives achieved in any kind of short timeframe. But think about how this plays out over the course of a decade or two or three. And that we are putting in place a set of policies and structures that will enable that in successive people that sit around this table, um, to go down that path successfully. I also think when you look at outcomes, the, the goals that we set, for me, I, I need to see something that is transformational for people. That is simply not just putting a Band-Aid on something for today, but is giving them a path towards success long-term. And that is transforming people so that hopefully three decades from now, the people that are sitting around this table aren't talking about the economic divide between the eastern part of the county and the rest of the county. And they're talking about the same things that we are talking about. There's some transformational aspect to this and that takes time. Um, I know from my work in Medicare and working with the community in Medicare, we do an extensive outreach and educational effort every year. We're lucky if we reach two percent of Medicaid or Medicare eligible people. The, the, the amount of people you can touch is surprisingly low. And I think we, we also need to understand that we're not going to get it a hundred percent. We're probably not going to get it seventy-five percent. But the bigger, the county does have a big bullhorn and we all have our own spheres of influence here and, and, and community access points. And that there's, there's a lot of work that goes into this and, uh, it, it's, it's, takes a lot to have a lot of impact. And I want to keep that in mind as well.
Well said. Thank you. So what I, here, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Last thing before you go on, I just want to then echo Commissioner Scott's point earlier that I think something that would be really helpful for us, that would be helpful term to term, would be figuring out what are we going to choose to be responsible for? Because in the absence of that, we end up just funding everything. Like people make a request and then some deliberative process, some, sometimes not as deliberate processes, uh, but then we're not really moving in any particular direction. So I mean, that's that, I think, marriage between outcomes that we're looking for and deciding we are choosing to make these things within our sphere of responsible, responsibility.
And so will the audit inform that choice or what do you think will inform that choice?
I hope so.
I, I just had to add, um, I, I had asked about the audit in the context of that senior services millage.
Yes.
Question. Um, basically, how do you, how do you maximize everything we're doing? If you get an infusion of dedicated funds for specific senior services? Um, so that, that could be both internal, um, but you could also look at how, how it impacts the external environment.
Okay. I think what I heard you saying with, with pretty close to one voice was that you want to start with an internal audit. You want to understand where the money's going and who you've asked to do work on behalf of the county. And then from there, you want to convene both the funders of these services and the providers of these services so that you can develop an aligned vision for moving forward, which would look like a model or a structure that mimics coordinated funding in some way with the service goal of providing transformational outcomes related to race, poverty, and trauma.
I don't agree with all of that, but I agree with a, a portion or a large portion of it. I don't know that we should be thinking about trying to mimic coordinated funding because it didn't work, right? Like, so I don't know why we would mimic a model that didn't, that didn't work.
Okay.
All right. So I think we need to move in a direction that is more purposeful and has those kinds of outcomes that we're looking for. Uh, and I'd also say to some extent, I think that the way we're talking about this audit is already being done in some ways. We have the program evaluation group that's working with OCD, uh, around a lot of the work that, uh, is going on for ARPA and, and other purposes where they're looking, uh, at a lot of the work that we're funding with local nonprofits. So to some extent, that's already happening, uh, and then working to build on that. And I, and we, I think last time allocated, la- at the end of last year, allocated two hundred thousand dollars to a mapping process that would be similar to that, which I think could dovetail from the work that's already being done with the program evaluation group. So some of that's already, I think, being in, in the works. But I want to reiterate, don't want to replicate a system that didn't work. I want us to find something that will work better.
Yes. Commissioner Somerville.
So I guess, and this is why we're doing this, because I think there's some disagreement there. Um, I think personally for me, and there might be some other people who feel this way, in order to achieve the outcomes that we want in the county around poverty and trauma, we actually need more partners and more dollars at the table, es- especially around housing and homelessness, especially around youth services. Um, and so maybe that means that there's like different buckets of partnerships among agencies in the county. Like maybe we have people who are interested in focusing on housing and homelessness. And maybe we have other org- like entities that financially support services for just youth. And maybe there's different, different buckets, but, or one, I, I just, for me, I think that we need more dollars in a bucket to support the county. And it's, it can't just be the county. Um, and so that was one of the benefits of coordinated funding. Where things fell off, I don't really know. I wasn't here. I've heard bits and pieces both from the county and outside agencies. And I think that like what I desire is like figuring out where those differences were and how we can get people, pull people back in because it's going to benefit more people that way. And so I don't know if other people agree with me. Um, it takes a majority to move something forward. So, um, I'm not sure how many people support that, but I know that we can't do it alone with the dollars that we have.
Okay. So Commissioner Labar, then Sanders, then Scott.
Yeah, I, I, um, I, I guess I'd rephrase it this way. Replicating coordinated funding, I, I don't think is even an option, let alone, uh, if, if, if it would be an optimal choice. But what coordinated funding did was respond in real time or as close to real time uh, to conditions as they existed. Where I think it came up short or where folks felt it came up short was in terms of changing outcomes, uh, and, and if we want to use that language, quote, moving the needle. Um, I think we should put our eggs in the basket of new human services partnership to be transformational. I think we should expect whatever new iteration of coordinated funding to, to be more mundane, more responsive, uh, and, and, and more task-oriented, uh, and, and, and more task oriented, performative, uh, sort of uh, boring. And, 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 and have that, that twin focus. Um, I use the, the example of hunger support. You know, i- is it a shame and, and a tragedy that there continues to be hunger in this community and others? Absolutely. But I, I'm also, I'm, I'm, I'm worried about affecting the conditions that lead to that. But I'm also concerned about, you know, feeding the kid that is hungry right now. I, I would, I would, I would have those two parallel structures with, with, with sort of different uh, goals in terms of which set of problems they're addressing in them and on what timeframe. Because built in NHSP is a five-year timeline that I think we have to honor. If for no other reason than to judge, did it succeed or not? And where do we, you know, where do we tweak it? Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
I would like to see um, a more consistent use of the resources and the services that we already have here in the county. I've said this before that um, I don't see um, inclusion, enough inclusion of the racial equity office when we're talking about these types of services. Especially if, you know, if we talk about external support or review of what we're doing. I think that we've got an office right here that provides us with the data. Whether it meets what we want or not. And we need to utilize that. It needs to be a prominent thread. It's, it can't be an office that we created so that we feel good and can pat ourselves on the back and say, oh, we did this, aren't we great? And then when we go to make these decisions, we're not asking. We're not requesting data uh, to help us inform whether or not the emergencies that we think are emergencies. And I'm guilty of it as well, uh, to see someone homeless and not care about the backstory, just know that the babies need to be housed. But we, we do have to make, we need to make it be part of the fabric, not an afterthought. And then with all due respect to any external experts, you know, I, I think we need to look internally first. I, I can envision that we don't have our own experts. And why we should be spending money on external people to come in and tell us what we need to do and how we need to do it. And perhaps do a better job of trying to gather the providers together in a more meaningful way. I say this all the time, poverty is an industry. Um, and we need to look at how do we, how, you know, sort of the sky is falling message that we get sometimes, which is, well, if we don't act, people are going to be unemployed and they're going to lose their jobs and that happens all the time. That's not necessarily what the truth is. It may mean that there is an adjustment, that there is a form of pivot that needs to occur. And I just want to find out how do we get to, how do we move all of the stuff out of the way as much as possible? And get to serving um, the residents and being honest and transparent with the residents. Even when they flood, you know, our conference room. Because they think that we're not going to act in a certain way and most of the time they're not informed. They don't know how we're, we're, what, what our thoughts are or what our leanings are towards. And so I want to echo, I think what I heard said earlier, which is I don't want to walk away from this retreat with like good stuff on paper. And then we make no real dent in what's needed.
Thank you.
Or at least be honest enough to say this is an elephant and we don't have enough teeth to bite into it.
Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Um, so I think that what, when I am talking, just to clarify about like when we're talking about what Commissioner LeBar and what Commissioner Hodge and I have been talking about is just that's not coordinated funding. I mean, one, I don't, I, I don't think that at this board table, we ever had a clear understanding of why Kofu went off the rails. Having a clear understanding of that could help us, but I don't think we have a clear understanding or an honest understanding of that. I don't want Kofu back. I want a coordinated spending. And so that's why I'm saying getting the people who are putting the money into nonprofits in our county that are helping us do this human services work. And having a clear idea where people are spending the money is what I'm looking for. Because right now I am concerned with the dissolution of coordinated funding that gave us the transparency about those dollars is that we are having a situation where one plus one is equaling less than two. But with the money that's in the community that people are, are willing to put forward, we could have a situation where one plus one equals more than two. And that's what I would like to be able to be clear about, having transparency about where money is going from the different philanthropic or government organizations. So we're not at a less than two situation because that is bad stewardship of funds. I don't know. And when you did a sum up that we necessarily need all the nonprofits at the table to begin with, I think what you need are the people that, I'm not saying there's not a role for them in the discussion, absolutely. But I think what you need to begin with is the people who are sending that money into the community and hoping to get a more transparent process. So we're not crossing the streams. We all watched Ghostbusters. We know that's bad. Okay? So um, and finally, then if we are then looking at an evaluation process, I think that we need to be realistic about what an evaluation is of the nonprofits to go to Commissioner Wachowski's point. When you were looking in your organization about doing outreach for Medicare and Medicaid services, getting 2% of people is huge. And I would like us to be realistic and have people who have done program evaluation to help tell us about what those realistic goals are. I know that when I did my own program evaluation course, looking at very small changes was huge. So sometimes I'm worried that we're asking our nonprofits to, to give us these gigantic numbers that are just not feasible for the work that they're doing. So having realistic numbers, that's a whole separate ball of wax than what I'm talking about. If I just am focusing this very clearly on what I am thinking about from that April meeting and that Commissioner LeBar I think tried to distill, I am looking at some way the county can be the convener either through itself or with help of, of an outside agency, either or on coordinated spending. So our dollars are reaching more rather than less, which is what I'm fearful that we're doing now. Thank you.
Commissioner Hodge.
Just real quick, I just want to make it really clear for everybody, you know, online that's watching too. The county has put more money into the various sectors and the organizations that received funding through Kofu more than ever before. So when we're at this conversation about the dissolution of Kofu and then the funding challenges that human service agencies are facing, it's not on our end because we're putting more into the system than ever before. That's it. But that's, yeah, like we're talking about one plus one is the math ain't mathing.
Commissioner Rabbi.
Uh, well, you're the math teacher, so no. I guess I'm having a little trouble understanding what, I mean, in some ways agreeing with what Commissioner Somerville was asking, but I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding why there's so much, um, it seems like negativity towards the coordinated funding model. It, it was a model I thought that was fairly effective at evaluating the outcomes that you're talking about and leveraging resources from other entities in the community. And I know you kept saying that it was, that it failed. Beyond the fact that one of the funders and then more of the funders stopped funding it, what do you mean by it failed?
Failed might be strong, maybe unsuccessful, uh, unsuccessful in reaching outcomes that, one of the reasons we weren't doing evaluation, the way that evaluation needed to be done. And I don't think we ever had a clear set of outcomes that we were measuring for success. So maybe if we had the, the same model with those additional things attached to it, it could be more successful, but if you add all those things through, it's not the same model.
I guess, I guess I never really saw it. I mean, I, from my experience, we did have pretty strong, maybe that fell off later on, but we did have pretty strong outcomes driven funding. It, it was built into the model and it was part of the decision-making of how things would get funded. You know, I, I, I saw one of the gaps of coordinated funding as being that it, and, and this was, this was an ongoing problem that I thought was a tweak that could have been made to the coordinated funding model that wouldn't have involved completely, you know, throwing it out the window. But a lot of smaller nonprofits were not able to apply for the funding because they, there was a whole long grant application process. And in order to do that, you had to have the staff to do it. And if you didn't have the staff to do it, then you couldn't get in the door. That's a fix that we should have made that we didn't make. That could have, I think, probably saved the coordinated funding model overall. But to me, that, I would identify that as in my eyes, one of the, one of the tweaks that should have been made. But I guess I'm trying to understand, you know, what fundamentally was so broken about the model that to bring, I think, you know, LeBar, you were saying some stuff about, you know, coordinated funding too, as well as, you know, Chairman Hodge. And I'm just trying to understand what the fundamental problems were that you identified so that we can, because I, I feel like we're, rather than trying to create a model from scratch, maybe we should try to fix the model that we had. And understand why it didn't work.
I'll just say real quick before Commissioner Scott and maybe LeBar, since he was called on, come in. Just want to highlight what Commissioner LeBar said earlier around new human services partnership. And what we were aiming to do with that between the different buckets of funds that go into that, the different kinds of programs that get funded, like those smaller organizations that you're mentioning. And what we did with the community priority fund where we funded small grassroots organizations in a way that we've never done before and are seeing success with that too. So we have this other model that we need to give a shot to.
Well, how are we, to your point, how are we evaluating success? For what we just.
That, yeah. So we have evaluators that are assigned to all of those programs. One, as a requirement for ARPA dollars, we.
Anymore though, didn't they both quit?
We, we had, do you want to give an update on what the evaluation looks like for that? We just had a summit this morning, New Human Services Partnership Equity Summit, where we have the evaluators there, well attended by many of the service, this is going to go on report of the chair later. Many of the services and community organizations that we fund here, uh, and the evaluators were at that too.
Yeah. So that's accurate. Um, the program evaluation team with New Human Services Partnership was brought in through a comprehensive RFP and bid process. Um, and they're an established and well-developed team with U of M. We're also partnering with the Engage Program at U of M specifically for comprehensive evaluation on the full ARPA suite of investments. So not just community priority fund, but all ARPA investments, which is more expansive than what we were going to be able to do um, with in-house staff.
So we are working with outside entities?
Yes.
What, what is that, what does working with mean? Like what, what are we going to see? What's, are we going to see a product? Is there a product that we can evaluate as a board?
Yeah. So full comprehensive evaluation of both um, process for um, ARPA investment as well as um, community impact. What will be produced in addition to the annual reporting that we are required to provide to treasury is a, a comprehensive data dashboard that will be accessible to the public, um, as well as annual reporting that will come to the board.
Is, is that what we're doing, what we're using now then instead of the evaluators that we had hired that left?
Yes.
But my other point, if, to Commissioner Robbie, when you said what didn't work about Kofu, what did to me, what, what I mean when I say that is that we had funders pull out of Kofu. And so that's what I'm saying about the coordinated spending. That's what didn't work to me. Kofu worked when everybody was giving money to one organization and we could see where all the money was going and there was transparency and we weren't having that less than issue. But we don't know where people are spending the money now. And so as a result, we've given more money than ever into human services partnership that might not be doing as much as it did before, because we don't know where the money is going. So as a result, some human services partnership, partners are maybe getting more funding than they ever have before and some are getting zero.
Well, I, I think that we've only exacerbated the problem that we had before, which is that if you didn't have grant writers before, now you're even more in a pickle because you need to apply to six different grants instead of just one. So I think, I think the problem is even worse. So I guess it gets back to my original question of like, what's so fundamentally wrong about the coordinated funding model?
We need people then to say that they're going to be contributing everything to the coordinated funding.
Yeah.
So if we can convince those people that used to be part of coordinated funding to be part of coordinated funding, I'd be happy to go back to that.
I think if that's the problem, that's one thing. But what I was hearing the chair say seemed like there was fundamentally like a philosophical disagreement with kind of the model of coordinated funding itself.
Well, I don't, I don't think I have a philosophical uh, disagreement with it, but I think like if the model is based on everybody coordinating their funding and putting their money in the pot and all the partners leave, it failed, right? Like they, so for whatever reasons, and we could probably spend a, a session doing a deep dive into why it failed and have that conversation publicly. They all pulled out for a reason, right? And so the, the model failed because everybody pulled out and then they weren't part of it. I think the other items that we talked about around evaluation and then outcomes and having metrics for it, those are at the things that we're doing now and could have been part of it before. But we don't have it and like Commissioner LeBar said earlier, we're probably not in a position to return to that exact same kind of model.
Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Um, yeah, one reason, because this was one of the items that I put in my priorities. One of the reasons why I'd like to see us facilitate some sort of conversation about pulling more resources. There are a number of agencies that kind of cast a wide net and social safety net issues in Waukesha County that are no longer getting funding from this. And their need for supporting residents in our county has only increased since the pandemic. So for example, Catholic Social Services, I call them in my day job when I need help with a constituent. Um, and they're no longer getting support from the county. Student Advocacy Center, they help students all over the county and their services have gone up and they're not. So I, I think that there's definitely something that we're missing. I don't know why people pulled away. What I wish to do and hope that enough people of this body wish to do is figure out how we can improve our new human services partnership by pulling in more resources and figuring out how we can make sure that there's at least a bottom line for some of these big, bigger agencies that do serve the whole county. Because we're going to start to see pretty soon here how big of a failure, and it's not our fault. It's, it's, it's not having everybody working together because we only have so many resources. So those are just two examples. There's many other examples, but I think that like there's a different level of certain agencies that like, that's what they do. They've been doing social safety net related work for decades. And then there's newer organizations that are doing similar things. And they're all important, the smaller organizations that are, you know, like in the western side of the county or the eastern side. Like they play an important role in social safety net because they're connected most closely with community members. But then you also have bigger agencies that can provide a different level of resource. So when I think about issues for older adults, it's Catholic Social Services. When I think of issues with, um, with students and things that could potentially change the trajectory of their life, I think of Student Advocacy Center. But there's also a ton of other youth-serving orgs that work with Student Advocacy Center. So I think it's just a bigger, there's just a bigger picture to think about here. And that's kind of where I'm hoping we can all go with this.
Great. So Commissioner LeBar and then Commissioner Robbie.
Just briefly to, to add some perspective to this, in terms of issues we heard about, the shortcomings of coordinated funding. What I heard, and again, this is what I heard as an individual from various sources was, one, uh, there are different motivations for the, for the folks at the table. Some were charitable endeavors, some were public endeavors, some were responding to missions, some were responding to, to law, di- different, different timelines. Because uh, you know, we were on a two-year election cycle and still are now, we'll be on a four-year, so forth, so forth. We'll be on a four-year, so forth, so forth. Board members come and go, that sort of thing. That here are the three things that I think had the most contention. One, O C E D did not have the staff capacity to meet every logistical need that every partner wanted met. That is not a criticism of O C E D staff, it's just a mathematical reality. Four, we heard time and time again, coordinated funding was too insular. If you were in the club, you were in the club and the club was pretty white. And, and, you know, I, I, I don't mean to, you know, gin up discussion here, but that was a synthesis of what we heard. And then five, we had five different sets of what are the outcomes we should measure and what should they reach and achieve? And so not only, I think, was there disagreement in terms of how do we measure outcomes, but there was disagreement in terms of what is a successful or unsuccessful outcome? That's a summary of what I heard was the, the shortcomings or lack of optimal performance within coordinating funding.
Thank you, Greg.
Forgive me, Commissioners, it's, it's your meeting, so I apologize. So I won't take a lot of time, but I do want to lift up two things. One, I heard from Commissioner Labar and the other from Commissioner Scott. So I too had those discussions with our partners and it became increasingly apparent to me that the ability for us as a community to align the mission and vision of three to four very different organizations. And even when you, when you look at the county and the city of Ann Arbor, I, I believe our visions are close, closer, closely aligned. I feel like there's some subtle differences there that really came to, came to the forefront as we move through coordinated funding. The other, the last piece, the other piece that I wanted to lift up was something that Commissioner Scott said. And I wrote it down twice in my notes. It can't be just the county. And what I heard repeatedly in this space for well over two years is the county can and should do more. The, you need to invest heavier, you need to lean into this space and you need to make sure that the appropriate outcomes are there. The reality to, to that narrative is we won't be successful with that model. We have to make sure that we coordinate our spending, coordinate our reach and, and make certain that we are leaning into the space that you all, I believe as nine commissioners, have the, the right to demand at this point. And that is that we are the convener of choice. Because all of that work, all of those conversations happen in this space. So I think it's going to be super important for this body to lean into those two things as we move forward. How do we align mission and vision across a number of different organizations? And how do we convene in that space and make sure that the resources that we allocate to the community are the right resources for the right reasons?
Thank you.
So what is the human, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I've said this before, I also was concerned that, I won't say many, some of these agencies weren't even close to trying to mirror the populations that they were serving. And so if I use the terminology that was used previously, you know, that this was kind of like a club. If, if the members of the club are unconnected from the communities that they're serving, how on earth can they come up with solutions or, or ways to improve the quality of life of the people that they're serving? Not only in their staffing, but in their board representation. That to me is baffling because if you are operating from a club mentality and I come from the area that you purport to be servicing, but you don't want to give me an opportunity to sit at the table because I've lived it and I may have some inexpensive solutions to the problems that you're putting on nice glossy paper that you're solving, then how does that help stop this ongoing trajectory? I don't see how it does that. And that has rarely been talked about. Nobody mentions that, but it needs to be talked about. Because if I'm living in an area and you're coming into my community and you're getting paid to do that, but I apply for a position or an opening and somehow I don't, I don't have an opportunity to be able to be at the table and talk about the people that I have lived with, am living with, have people that are still in that community. I, I don't see how you can be as effective. And so I, I like to keep that at the forefront. Because I think when we looked at funding through ARPA dollars, many of those orientation sessions, the nonprofit, the first question they wanted to know was how much can we apply for? And essentially, would our chances be better if we aligned ourselves with a smaller nonprofit? Would that improve our chances? That's very insulting to me and it should be to any of our residents. And that needs to be talked about when you're talking about sort of a club mentality of these are, I hate to say the term that most people would understand, the good old boys' club. You know, this can't be a good old boys' club if, if you're only letting the boys in. So.
Mr. Robbie?
So yeah, so I guess what I wanted to understand then too is, okay, so what is this human service partnership? I don't even, I guess I don't know what it is. Did we pass a resolution as a board to enter into the human service partnership? Is there a model for it?
Are you asking what is the new human services partnership? Yeah, okay. So the name itself probably could be better, right? Because at a certain point, it won't be new anymore. But it, because that is, the name is the new human services partnership. Proper noun. So there are three buckets of dollars that go into that. So we have, there are the high impact.
Just to be clear, proper noun. So you said proper noun, so not the new, the organization new.
It is ours. So it's a partnership between the county government, the urban county and the city of Ann Arbor. So those are the partners. Those are who are putting the dollars in the bucket for it. So it's, it's just basically the, the public partners.
And there's, there's an official bucket that we put our money in?
Well, I mean, I have a bucket under here, but it's a.
No, like, not like a physical bucket, but like an account, like, is it similar to coordinated funding in the sense that there's, we allocate dollars into?
We allocate dollars, yeah.
And then who is the committee that studies who to fund?
Well, so OC, it's run out of O C E D. And then that's where the evaluation that was talked about earlier is done with. So they're working with O C E D on that.
So OC staff gets to decide?
No, C D staff. So they go through a process. We got an email about it not that long ago too, about recruiting community members to do it. So community members are recruited. And then they ask us to help recruit community members too, to be part of the grant reviews for it. So O C D sent us an email like a couple of weeks ago, I think, to ask us to blast that out too.
So there's a committee that reviews?
Grant applications.
Application.
Yes. And so there are three different kinds of grants that are part of the new human services partnership. So we have the high-impact grants and that's like the larger dollar grants that we're hoping to see impact, like transformative impact in over a longer period of time. There are many grants which are smaller dollar grants largely for organizations that haven't partnered with the county before, the hope being that we're bringing new people into it. And then there are the safety net grants and those ones go to partners that we, that have been historically involved with the county and have consistently received funding from us. So three different kinds, three different buckets of dollars.
And we, we became part of this, what, like?
Well, we created it. This is what, this was the long.
So I guess when was, when did the board create it? Like, what was?
The work, to start creating it began, I think in 2019. And there were, it was like a response to the dissolution of KOFU. This was what came out of that. And we've allocated dollars to that since then. Do you want to add anybody? Hopefully my summary is pretty accurate.
Just that, I think one of the major differences was that there is community voice in that we are asking for community volunteers to be reviewers of these applications. So that's a voice that was not there.
Are the meetings like public?
Yeah, the meetings are public. I mean, we had commissioners involved with the development of this. So last term, it was the two of you, Commissioner Scott and Labar, Shink and Ricky Jefferson were, I think, the four that were regularly involved with the group that worked to develop the new human service partnership.
And so the, the meetings are publicly posted and the public can review the applications that come in and watch the process of how the decisions are made.
I don't know about that. Like, I don't know if it's live streamed. Yeah.
We haven't made any of those things public, things I've asked for, I haven't even gotten.
So then I guess like, because one of, one of the criticisms I remember from coordinated funding was that it was not as public of a process as it could have been. So I guess I'm trying to understand like what is different that what we're doing now versus what was done minus the partners?
Andy, do you want to, I mean, your hand is up.
Yeah, the, 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 the committee is, is informal and was formed in 2021, I believe. I don't know if those are, are publicly listed. It's, it's advisory. There was also a, a separate committee that was set up to advise on the spending of community priority funds under the ARPA dollars. And so I think there is a bit of confusion in terms of who does what and what is the, the authority. Just to, just to remind folks though, this came out of the racial equity office ordinance that we passed in 2018, which if, if we go back and look was designed to be an advisory entity, designed to infuse the thinking around racial equity into every endeavor that the county does in, in any decision it makes. But kind of through a, candidly, a confluence of circumstances had, you know, a direct impact on the, on the development of NHSP and the focus of NHSP in those areas of racism, poverty and trauma.
So I'm going to make a facilitative suggestion here. So you called this category promote and improve human services delivery. And there's a new human services partnership that was described as kind of a replacement for KOFU. And then there seems to be a lot of momentum and consensus around wanting an audit, more information, more transparency around who we've asked to do what and who's receiving money. And then a desire to convene funders to understand where they're funding, why they're funding, how they're going through that process. And then coming up with some sort of model that allows for more collaboration and partnership that we can use to drive outcomes that are measurable. I'm seeing, I'm seeing Crystal shake her head. Okay.
May I just add one other piece to what Commissioner Labar had referenced?
Please.
There's also a, a bit of a governance team that has evolved over time. There are a few commissioners in this space along with city council members, city of Ann Arbor, who have met on some frequency to move us through the process. So that group is still meeting and convening. So I, I think they have adopted the role of governance over the, the, the whole of the process.
Love at some point to have mapped out for me what exists for this human service partnership. I, I guess I, you know, vividly remember one of my colleagues on the board, who no longer serves on the board, Ronnie Peterson, going on for, you know, long periods of time about how there was a lack of transparency in coordinated funding and how he believed that, you know, it should be, it's the board of commissioners money, you know, the people's money, Washtenaw County voters' money, that we should be ultimately decision makers and that this, you know, unelected group of people who was appointed by the board to make decisions on coordinated funding, you know, shouldn't be the ultimate decision makers. And they weren't. We still ultimately voted. But that was a point of disagreement with, you know, himself and some of the other commissioners. But I, I hear his voice resonating in my head now because here we are again talking about a new human service partnership. And, you know, and it's, and it's some of the same, you know, conversations that are happening and some of the same reasons that were given for why coordinated funding didn't, you know, didn't work out. But now how is this new human service partnership any different if we're still having, you know, like, I don't know what half these meetings are, you know? I, I don't understand how we as a board have oversight over this money. What's, what's the chain of how the money flows into this pot? Who makes the decisions? Are they appointed by the board of commissioners? Are they appointed by city council? How did we decide which commissioners get to be part of this? And do we appoint the commissioners? There's just a lot of questions that I have based on, you know, I, I mean, is this a formal entity or is it just an informal partnership? Is there an actual account that we put our money into that's then allocated? Are there parameters on how we allocate that money? I just don't, I don't know enough to like be able to say that this process is working that we have now. I, what I, what I do know is that coordinated funding was well-vetted and that there were a lot of guardrails built into it and that we voted on it as a board, appointed people to it as a board, made allocations of dollars to specific organizations as a board in coordination with other entities. And, you know, we don't have to call it coordinated funding, but I feel like we should probably try to do something like that again. And maybe make tweaks around transparency and make tweaks around making sure that organizations that aren't part of that good old boy network, I, I, you know, I think that's a fair criticism and something that should have changed with coordinated funding. And that's something that we should do now, but is what we have now actually different? Because it kind of feels like it's still maybe something similar to what we used to have.
Commissioner Beaman?
Emma, can I bring it back to your points of, I feel that we've, you know, hit, hit on some areas where this topic can go. So as you said, an audit, so figuring out what's happening, what's working, what's not working, bringing everybody together so that we are all at the table, we are all coming from the same place. We all do understand figuring out who are the partners? Are there more partners necessary? And then also those outcomes. So what do we want? What did we say we're going to deliver? When are we delivering it? Are we meeting it? All of those different things. So I think we're kind of coming full circle again and again, kind of coming back to those same points of, of what's needed to move this forward.
Great. Thank you. Yes.
I don't think we can rice this because we don't have a, a, a common understanding at this point around what we're even doing right now.
Right.
And I would say for anyone that wants to learn more about the new human services partnership, we've had a number of presentations by Morgan and O C E D at working sessions last year. It's recorded. So I think we can have that sent out again. And I would ask that everybody that needs a refresher or needs to learn about it for the first time, because we do have new people to, to watch the, the recording. But I don't know how we move forward in attempting the rice model on this thing where we have something that we're doing right now that evolved or came to be as a response to the dissolution of KOFU when we're not operating from common understanding about what we're doing right now.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't think in, in this current iteration, this is riceable. But I do hear, and I think it was summarized very thoughtfully by Commissioner Beaman, a lot of consensus around next steps, which is really the purpose. So I feel like we put this particular one, we've, we've thoroughly talked about it. We've identified what would be the next set of priorities. I'm going to suggest we take a break here. When we come back.
No, I just wanted to lean in and say, I, I've heard all of you and it is time for us to come back before you and, and provide you, my, my notes are some mapping of the process. Perhaps it's time for us to talk about that again. We do need to do an audit. Because as a board, you, you should have a, a regular check-ins on and you should know where money has been spent. And so we will bring that back to you. I've heard that loud and, and clear today. And also, if I could lighten the moment a little bit, I had rice for lunch and I'm not having rice for a couple of weeks now after.
Okay, very good.
Everything, like you literally put stuff into a piece and you mash it through. Like, that's kind of what this process is. What it feels like right now.
All right, you are due for a meal break, so I'll see you back in half an hour. Isn't that right? Is that? Is there a meal break? Help me understand. I thought my agenda said you were taking a 30-minute meal break. Are we taking? Oh, the food's not here yet, so. All right. Well, I think we should take a break anyway, if you're all okay with that. I mean, let's, okay, let's just keep going. Yep. All right, let's, let's move on then to the next strategic priority for us to discuss, which is provide good government. So there was some discussion around making sure that we understand vacancy rates, evaluation. making sure that we understand vacancy rates, evaluation, programming launch using ARPA funds, good governance and hiring strategy to properly staff the county and the Board of Commissioners. What questions do you have about this? What more do you need to clarify that can be accomplished in the twenty-three, twenty-four term? So I've heard you. We're not going to rice this. We're going to get clear on what the action plan is for the twenty-three, twenty-four term. Yes. Good government. During good government. Well, let's have some conversation first. Some clarification of what this means to you and what you're looking for. Please, Commissioner.
I feel like I have, um, uh, several, I gave several of these comments in here, and all of my comments really were about understanding, um, I mean, I guess it's good government. I don't, whatever, I didn't make the category. Um, it was all about the transparency and budgeting because it's very hard for us to think about how we're making budgetary changes. And it may go back, all of it, to thinking about how we're funding human services partnership because we have given them more money. And there are things in the county other than even things we're talking about at this table, even other than things like the human services partnerships that are, that seem maybe a little bit more field, but are just as important. My, my idea here was that we could understand more clearly on where changes in the budget can be made. So if I understand the functional vacancy rate of general fund positions, I can understand where I can take money and allocate that to something else. I can understand, um, uh, an idea, like, I have, I think that was me too, the transparency and budgeting, was that somebody else? I think that was me. I don't know, like, if it went to equity-based programming, they can say the marijuana money, but we have no idea of what that programming was. So I want to try to figure out how we can understand where money is not being used and being used in a way to think about how people at this table might determine how they're actually having more say on directions that money goes to in the budget. Because I, right now, I feel like, and I say this as the former chair of the Ways and Means, that we look at the budget and we're like, yeah, it looks more or less okay, things are humming along. But we all have ideas about things we'd like to do in the county, and we don't have ideas on what to, and we are very clearly counseled by our administrator. If you want to do that, you have to figure out where you get the money from. He's right. My dad told me the same thing. He still does. Um, and so I think that's true, but it's hard to look at the budget and say, this is where the money can come from. So that's one of, what my idea about functional vacancy rate was one way to see, here's one way I could find out where money could come from.
Great, Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Yeah, when I look at all of these, um, one thing that I think a lot about, and I've been spending a lot of time on the county's website, um, it's very hard to navigate, and I work in government and I am a part of government. Um, when, on any given day, when I go to our website to find an old packet that was up, it's very difficult. Um, if I want to find a different border commission meeting, it's very hard. Um, and so I think even when we're talking about information about budgets, like even if we had a place for that to share publicly, like in a, a readable way for like a basic understanding of like buckets and graphs, like the website's very hard to navigate. So, um, in my, in our first little icebreaker earlier, one thing that I said is improving communication, and I feel very strongly that most people don't understand what the nine of us do. When I go to doors to talk to people about county government, they literally have no clue, and I feel like we make a lot of really big decisions. There are a lot of, um, ways that we can impact people's lives that they just don't know who we are or what the county is responsible for. Um, so that's one way, you know, good government to me means people know what we do and know how to access our services because we can put as much money as we want into things like weatherization, but unless people know how to utilize those services, it doesn't really mean anything. So, or when we put money into programs to help expand access to healthcare. Um, so I just, I want people to understand and, and, and know how to access our services better. And that's what good government means to me, like, people who are not us and who don't work here should be able to navigate the system just as easily, or it's actually hard. It's hard for me, and I, I, I know more than the average person about government. So I would like to see us improve overall access and communication between us and residents.
Somebody give us an update on the website redesign. I think we have a a significant website redesign that's coming that will fix a lot of the issues that were just mentioned. And, you know, we, we did, your predecessor and I worked on, uh, and then, and Ashley's predecessor worked on, uh, trying to improve the board and commission process to make that clearer, and I think that those uh, updates were good. And I expect that that's what's going to happen with the other, uh, changes to the website too. So that is coming, right? I know. It's a challenge sometimes.
Changes to the website, that's an organic.
It's organic, it's happening though, it's in the works.
I- i- it's happening, and I think there are folks in this room will tell you that, uh, it is a sore spot for the administrator. Uh, we, we are not where we need to be. We are, uh, uh, I believe, a, a county that's very well-run, but there's no evidence on our webpage of that. We don't have a list of key performance indicators that, uh, I've been preaching for a long time should be front and center. You should be able to go to our webpage and say, here's what the county values, and here's how well they do the things that they value. So we have some work to do there. That webpage is in a state of update, of being updated, so more to come.
All right, so I'm hearing some consistency on, on this so far. It's actually pretty exciting. I'm hearing that you're saying we want transparency, not only for county residents, but for ourselves. We want to be able to know and understand how decisions are made, where the money is, and where we have opportunity to make governmental choices to spend the money differently. And then we also want people to have an understanding of what the county does and what the commissioners do and how they can get involved with that. Right, please.
Can I add one thing to this? When it, when it comes to the agenda items that we're considering and the issues that we're, we're dealing with, I, I, and I think we hear this in different ways. We heard it in the last conversation about gaining understanding of the way things work and I would like to see improvement in, I don't want to say, I don't mean this in a negative way. I would like to see an evolution in the documents that we are presented as a commission and then also the public sees that explains the items that we are dealing with.
Okay.
And I think that they, that we could do a better job of having documents that analyze more and present more information um, in our packets and in the information that we're dealing with on issues. Um, I think that, and again, I'm not trying to sound critical of the administration or, or staff and people that have worked on this in the past. I do think we could do a better job of presenting the topics that we are discussing in gaining that understanding.
And just to clarify, so I make sure I'm, I'm hearing you correctly. Are you looking for summaries of the issue that would be pre-worked to a meeting? So that when you came to the meeting, it would be more discussing the information that was presented and considering the call to action that was invited by the administration?
So I think, so we, in, in our packets, we have these documents which are essentially kind of background documents.
Okay.
I think they could be much more comprehensive and analytical. Um, they could be deeper.
Okay.
Um, you know, we, we have built it in where they include the racial, uh, uh, equity officer uh, and her perspective on things, but I think, I think those could be even deeper in analytical documents that would lend itself to better understanding of what is going on.
Commissioner Somerville, did you have your hand up?
Something that Commissioner Matyaski just said also. So, um, in my past life, when I was a Slandy City Council member, we often had working sessions before our meetings when we had something like that was going to be maybe contentious or just needed some more work, um, maybe the week before. And I think sometimes when we have bigger issues come before us, it would be nice if we utilized the working session before our meeting um, to actually dig deeper in, in a public meeting because I love transparency. And I think people really, and, and to go back to like this whole idea of good government, I think people should watch us make the decisions. And, um, you know, I work in Lansing and, and for like, one of the great processes of once you introduce a bill is it goes through committee and it goes back to the floor and it goes to the other chamber, and you get to watch amendments and substitutes. And I, I think that process is magical. And I think people should be able to see us make decisions because if they get the document that we get and that's just, that's the decision and we vote on it, I just don't think it does what I wish to have happen. I think people should see us do our job, um, publicly in a meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
I just want to say that's brilliant. And I think that's a great idea. I like working session for hearing about ideas that could come to us, like, I don't want to like never hear from like people and, and things we need to like hear about and learn about. But I also think a component of our working session, doing exactly what you're saying is brilliant, and I'm just sorry we've never thought of the idea before. And I really, really hope we institute that change. That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Somerville.
Commissioner Beaman and then Commissioner Light.
Thank you. Um, I just want to circle back to something that, um, Commissioner Matyaski touched on for a second there. I feel like there are a lot of times we talk, um, dollars and we talk outcomes, but we don't necessarily talk about them together. So we have a wonderful presentation on the outcomes of this program, but not necessarily the dollars and the all of the work that went into that, or if it's there, it's kind of a footnote. And then the, the, on the other side of it, we talk a lot about the dollars and how we're spending it, but we aren't necessarily having that impactful, um, outcome that people can really, it resonates with people, right? So we're almost talking like numbers and feelings, almost, or numbers and, and, um, work. Um, and so somehow better pairing those together so that when you do tune in, you say, okay, here's these dollars, and it did this. And it's very clear versus a whole slide of numbers or a whole slide of faces, like somehow really bringing that jointing that back together so that our residents can see how it goes. Because again, I think sometimes we're either very analytical or very storytelling and not really combining the two.
Thank you. Commissioner Light.
I was just going to add that if we take a, a deeper dive in and we have more explanation, um, we as commissioners, we're going to need to read that information prior to even coming to a meeting. So we are going to have to take responsibility with getting the information um, so that we are able to provide it to our constituents and, and making sure that they know. But before we take the deeper dive, we have to commit to making sure that we read our packets before we come so that we know what's going on, so that we are, um, all on the same page. So taking that deeper dive is going to take more responsibility and committing more time to, um, what we need to know of. Because we can read our packets, and a lot of times we ask questions and we, um, follow up in the meetings, but it's in the packet and all you had to do was read it. And if you would have read it before you came to the meeting, then there wouldn't be, um, a series of questions behind what's going on. So the responsibility of us is to read the packets. Um, I don't care if you have to Google it, get an understanding, um, because in my former life, I was an educator and I worked in social services, and I always expressed that I need for you to read the information um, before you come to me so that there's a clear explanation. So we are on the same page, and if you don't understand then, um, because it's explained and you've had time to research it, then we can navigate together to make sure there's a clear understanding. So that's what we need to do. Um, and I think that could alleviate some of the, um, not knowing in the series of things that we, you know, not understanding.
Thank you, yeah, well said. Commissioner Robbie.
Well, I certainly agree with everything Commissioner Light said, and, uh, obviously commissioners should do as much homework as possible. I, I do want to give, uh, make sure that there's the space and understanding that not everything is Google-able and not everything is in the packet. And sometimes you do have to ask questions of, of staff and/or stakeholders that are here. Um, and, you know, I think, I think that's an important part of the process. And getting to what, um, Commissioner Somerville said, you know, I think, I think, I think we have to, it's not just about, I think, having the conversations at working session. I think it's about creating and having a culture on this board of allowing disagreement and questioning. And there has to be disagreement and questioning, and we have to have those opportunities to de- debate each other, and we can't just work everything out beforehand. Um, you know, I mean, e- even if we wanted to work everything out beforehand, it's illegal. Yeah, and, and, uh, you know, and, and we should have the debate here, and we should, I mean, when I was on the board prior, um, I mean, we would actively like amend things, we would amend amendments, we would, you know, I mean, it was constantly an iterative process. Um, and I, you know, I, I promised the, uh, the chair that I would, uh, give this, you know, whole, uh, doing, um, you know, eliminating working session or, or Ways and Means, you know, a, a college try, and I'm not ready to opine yet on fully my opinion on it, but I will say that, um, you know, working set, Ways and Means was the opportunity for us to make the changes and to have the debates and to edit, um, make amendments, stuff like that. Now we have first and second reading, so maybe it's a matter of encouraging us to be more deliberative on first reading, making those amendments that we need to, because I agree, we should have, the public should be able to see, you know, government in action. They should be able to see us with disagreements and make, you know, bringing those disagreements forward. I don't know that we've actually voted on any amendments to a resolution that's come forward. And I feel like, I feel like we should do more of that, honestly, you know, I mean, and, and, and to be, to be clear, I will, I will say this, that Chair Hodge has done a fantastic job of working with people. So in some ways, it's a testament to your work, Chair, that you're willing to work with people, hear people out, and, you know, incorporate the concerns that people have into the resolutions that we have that come before us. So I think a lot of this is a testament to you. Uh, but, a- and at the same time, if we want to have a more deliberative and open, you know, dialogue, I think we should encourage that and encourage a space where disagreement is not only okay, but it's encouraged, and we can disagree with each other without getting angry at each other, without rolling our eyes at each other. And that, you know, that we can have an, an honest and open dialogue. I think that's what the public deserves to see.
Yeah, Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah, I see your hands up. Um, at five, in, in one minute, we're going to break for thirty minutes, so.
Okay, well then, w- break for thirty minutes. I would just ask everybody to think about, uh, how, what might make you feel more comfortable during first reading of an item to do that? Because that is the purpose of having the two-reading system. So if we continue down the path that we go down where someone moves all of the resolutions, and then we go through it, I mean, that's just, that's losing that opportunity to have those kinds of discussions. Because what ends up happening instead is that we table a thing and then it comes back later, as opposed to us doing amendments on the, here. Thank, yeah, go ahead.
I, I just, uh, to Commissioner Beaman's point, we used to do more storytelling at the, uh, working session. And that was set the table for ways, what was then Ways and Means, and then to the full bore. So that is the framework that historically we've had in the organization. And what I'm hearing is perhaps there's an opportunity to move back into that frame in some way, because I think the storytelling piece gets to the engagement of the community and our, our other, other stakeholders and partners. So perhaps there's an opportunity for us to go back and, after hearing this conversation, and bring back some recommendations.
Excellent, thank you. So we're going to take a break. Um, food, I'm told, is out the doorway. Um, do you all want a full thirty minutes, or would you like more time to work through some of these priorities?
I, I don't know how you normally do it. Do you do like a working break? This is not normal, so we'll, we'll take a break for thirty minutes.
Okay.
And then we'll come back.
Perfect.
So if there are no objections, we will take a break until five thirty-five.
Okay.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you. So I really appreciate the quality of discussion that we had before the break. And I was able to translate everything that you shared where I heard the sweet sound of consensus into some actionable points for the first two strategic priority areas. And so I'm excited for us to continue finalizing what we want to accomplish in the next term for affordable and available housing. That's our next, our next strategic priority area. So what do you think is most important for us to accomplish in the 2324 term?
All right. So we're, I just want to make sure everybody knows that we are talking about affordable and available housing now.
We are.
We're done with good government.
We are done with that.
Yeah, we're on affordable and available housing. So I'll start.
Yeah.
I am a big fan of permanent supportive housing because it wraps affordable housing into social work for people with substance use and other mental health related issues. And it provides stabilization for folks, folks most served by those types of programs are chronically homeless. And usually the reason that causes that is mental health and substance use related issues. So it's, we've seen great successes across the country with permanent supportive housing. In my day job, I do a lot of work around expanding permanent supportive housing in the state of Michigan. It's been proven to be effective. And for me personally, I know many people who have benefited from permanent supportive housing because some folks, unfortunately, even if they have affordable housing, they need a little bit of help to stay on track.
Right, to stay housed, for sure. Okay. Please Commissioner Labar.
This is an area where I don't have expertise and I'm glad that we do, I think, have folks who have been active on these issues on the board. I served very briefly on the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. The only thing I ever did of any substance there was help hire Jennifer Hall. And so candidly, if there are recommendations that this board has that a majority of us can support where we can be helpful, I want to lean into that and be helpful as a fellow commissioner. The one thing that I think would benefit all of us is having a sense of where the county can avoid interaction with municipal zoning, just because that can be such a sticking point. And I want to thank Ann Arbor City Council now. I think we've got a good council in terms of housing issues, but I know that can change. So that's, that's my take on it and looking to be helpful. Thanks.
Please Commissioner Shannon.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of bounce off of Commissioner Labar's point there and that there are leaders in municipalities in District Three that want to lean in on this and want to try and help solve this issue, but they don't really know where to start. A lot of them do have little pockets of affordable housing. I have some USDA backed affordable housing, but they don't, that was done maybe by prior leadership. It's been there a while and they're not quite certain how to really get the ball rolling. So I would say the more that we can bring people to the table around this conversation, I think we're going to find more hands to help, if you will, that are out there that want to address this and tackle it head on, but aren't necessarily certain the best way to go about it. And I don't know that we have the roadmap, but we've done it previously and we could at least serve as a guide, if you will.
So can I ask a question about, do you all view this as different than the new human services partnership? Is this one element of service delivery where you're bringing in things like the WHOA and the Shelter Association? Or does this feel like a standalone topic to you? Yes, Commissioner?
I think it's a standalone topic and I don't, I don't know that we need to talk about the new human services partnership again for the rest of the day.
Commissioner Scott.
I'm sorry. I, I want to, but I was going to, I wanted to, would you say, but I was going to ask Commissioner Somerville, how she envisioned seeing those supportive services if they were like with people that we are, that already do that work because there are organizations we work with as the county that do that work. You envision working in partnership with them in creating some of that supportive housing? Like what, what's your, what's your vision, Annie? Thanks.
Thank you for asking. So I think that the, the best role that the county could play here is actually helping find the space to build more. So part of the problem is that you have to secure like either an existing building to convert and redevelop or find vacant land. I think that that's a role that the county could play, I hope will play. There are dollars at the state level right now to help build more permanent supportive housing. I think the problem for some of our permanent supportive housing providers is just it's the zoning. It's actually finding the space. So in Ypsilanti City, where I used to serve on city council when I was a member, we, we actually as a city obtained a site because the house went into foreclosure and actually our current treasurer came to us with an opportunity where we purchased the site for like a hundred and little over a hundred thousand dollars and we turned it, we flipped it for redevelopment and we chose permanent supportive housing for that. So that's kind of what I mean, that we have permanent supportive housing agencies in Washtenaw County. I think that there's definitely desire to do more of that work, but like for example in Ypsilanti, we're getting ready to see the start of a project. It's the only one. And some of the services that could be provided in places where there's more like in Ann Arbor, there are a ton of permanent supportive housing sites. So that allows for like 24/7 staff support in some cases in the Ypsilanti location that's not going to be available. It just because there's not enough, there's not enough.
Back to order.
Thank you. So I really appreciate the quality of discussion that we had before the break. And I was able to translate everything that you shared. Where I heard the sweet sound of consensus into some actionable points for the first two strategic priority areas. And so I'm excited for us to continue. Finalizing what we want to accomplish in the next term for affordable and available housing. That's our next. Our next strategic priority area. So what do you think is most important for us to accomplish in the 2324 term?
All right. So we're, I just want to make sure everybody knows that we are talking about affordable and available housing now.
We are.
We're done with good government.
We are done with that.
Yeah, more on affordable and available housing. So I'll start. I am a big fan of permanent supportive housing because it wraps affordable housing into social work for people with. Substance use and other mental health. Related issues and it provides stabilization for folks. Folks most served by those types of programs are chronically homeless and usually the reason that causes that is. Mental health and substance use related issues. So it's, we've seen great successes across the country with permanent supportive housing. In my day job, I do a lot of work around expanding permanent supportive housing in the state of Michigan. It's been proven to be effective and for me personally, I know many people who have benefited from permanent supportive housing because. Some folks unfortunately, even if they have affordable housing, they need a little bit of help to stay on track.
Right, to stay housed for sure. Please Commissioner Labar.
This is an area where I don't have expertise and I'm glad that we do, I think, have folks who have. Been active on these issues on the board. I served very briefly. On the Ann Arbor Housing Commission, the only thing I ever did of any substance there was help hire Jennifer Hall. And so candidly, if there are recommendations that this board has that a majority of. Of us can support where we can be helpful, I want to, you know, lean into that and be helpful as a fellow commissioner. The one thing that I think would benefit all of us is having a sense of where the county can avoid interaction with municipal zoning. Just because that can be such a sticking point and I want to thank Ann Arbor City Council now. I think we've got a. A good council in terms of housing issues, but I know that can change. So. That's, that's my take on it. Looking to be helpful. Thanks.
Please Commissioner. Shannon.
Thank you. I'm going to kind of bounce off of Commissioner Labar's point there and that there are. Leaders in municipalities in District Three that want to lean in on this and want to try and help solve this issue. But they don't really know where to start. A lot of them do have. Little pockets of affordable housing. I have some USDA backed affordable housing. But they don't, that was done maybe by prior leadership. It's been there a while and they're not quite certain how to really get the ball rolling. So I would say the more that we can bring people to the table around this conversation, I think we're going to find. More hands to help, if you will, that are out there that want to address this and. Tackle it head on, but aren't necessarily certain the best way to go about it. And I don't know that we have the roadmap, but we've done it previously and we could at least. Serve as a guide, if you will.
So can I ask? A question about, do you all view this as different than? The new human services partnership? Is this one element of service delivery where you're bringing in things like the WHOA and the Shelter Association? Or does this feel like a standalone topic to you? Yes, Commissioner.
I think it's a standalone topic and I don't, I don't know that we need to talk about the new human services partnership again for the rest of the day.
Commissioner Scott.
I'm sorry, I, I want to, but I was going to, I wanted to, would you say, but I was going to ask Commissioner Somerville. How would she envision seeing those supportive services if they were like with people that we are, that already do that work? Cause there are organizations we work with as the county that do that work. You envision working in partnership with them. In creating some of that supportive housing, like what, what's your, what's your vision, Annie? Thanks.
Thank you for asking. So I think that the, the best role that the county could play here is actually helping find the space to build more. So part of the problem is that you have to secure. Like either an existing building to convert and redevelop or find vacant land. I think that that's a role that the county could play, I hope will play. There are dollars at the state level right now to help build more permanent supportive housing. I think the problem for some of our permanent supportive housing providers is just, it's the zoning, it's actually finding the space. So. In Ypsilanti City where I used to serve on city council when I was a member, we. We actually as a city obtained a site because the house went into foreclosure and actually. Our current treasurer came to us with an opportunity where we purchased the site for like a hundred and little over a hundred thousand dollars. And we turned it, we flipped it for redevelopment and we chose permanent supportive housing for that. So. That's kind of what I mean that we have permanent supportive housing agencies in Washtenaw County. I think that. There's definitely desire to do more of that work, but like, for example, in Ypsilanti, we're getting ready to see the start of a project. It's the only one. And some of the services that could be provided in places where there's more like in Ann Arbor, there are a ton of permanent supportive housing sites. So that allows for like 24/7. Staff support in some cases in the Ypsilanti location that's not going to be available. It just because there's not enough, there's not enough. Density in, in facilities of that nature. So. Seeing more of that and I just, there's, there's plenty of other spaces in Washtenaw County outside of. The city of Ann Arbor and the city of Ypsie that I think could benefit from having. One to two permanent supportive housing sites. I think about a Northfield Township. I know there's going to be another one going into Dexter. Yeah. So it's, that's what I hope, but we can help facilitate more building of permanent supportive housing.
Commissioner Robbie.
Yeah. So I agree with everything that's been said. I, I think to start off with, I want to say the, you know. The value set that brings me into the affordable housing space in terms of how we are going to fix the problem. And this sounds like an obvious statement, but we need to actually build affordable housing. There's a lot of philosophy out there about how building other kinds of housing will lead to affordable housing. Unfortunately, I think that is mythical. And I think that we need to build actual affordable housing in order to have affordable housing. So. Sounds like a common sense statement, but fortunately it's not always common sense like that. So in order to do that, how do we, how do we accomplish that goal? And I think there's really three. Or four ways that the county can, can engage with that. And the first is, as was being discussed, partnering with other organizations. But actually the. Most impactful way, I think that, that we can have. You know, a positive beneficial impact on creating affordable housing in our community. Is by the county actually leveraging its resources to do that. And so I think there's really three ways that we can do that. The first is leveraging our land assets. Using our land to, to build, develop affordable housing. The second is using our bonding capacity and our resources that we have. To purchase existing housing stock in our community that we can convert and basically. Convert to, you know, affordable housing. And the fourth is using existing county buildings, like we have county buildings that I think could be repurposed. For, for, for those, you know, for those purposes as well. So we have land, we have buildings and we have. You know, bonding capacity and resources to buy, you know, buildings in our community. I do think that as we talk about affordable housing, we need to talk about a full mix of what. Types of housing, you know, we are creating because housing is. In our capitalist society, so often we think of, when we think of affordable housing, we think of people renting. Well, I think we need to get away from that, you know, mindset and creating housing democracy. Which is something that, you know, actually Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County and Ypsilanti has been a pioneer in. In the country historically in creating cooperative housing where people that live in the housing units. Actually have democratic control of what happens in those, in those housing developments. And I think the more that we can look at models like that. The more that we can create long-term sustainable housing. Oftentimes there's deals with developers that are, you know, it's a, it's a land lease or it's a short-term deal. The houses are going to be affordable for 50 years or even, you know, sometimes less than that. And we need to think longer term than that. We need to think into the infinite future because. I don't think that this problem is going to go away in 50 years and it's not going to go away in a hundred years. It's going to be a problem. That our community is going to be facing indefinitely. So we want to create solutions that will last into the future. That create that democratic control and that don't put people in a perpetuating situation where they're having to, where they're, they're not able to. Create. Generational opportunities for their families to succeed in the future too.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yeah. So, um, thank you for that. One thing that is recent in the last year. I keep talking about my past life, but last summer I went through a really long community benefits process for a site that's now is going, it was named. Dorsey Estates and it is a development of 46 units of for sale housing. It's a mixture of single family. Duplexes and five plexes, but half of the site is actually permanently affordable. And so to the point of make creating long-term permanently affordable for sale options for folks. I would rather somebody be paying into a mortgage than paying into a landlord system. And I think that's something that the county has actually already been, was very deeply involved with the Dorsey Estate project. I wasn't on the board when they approved funding for that, but. It, it was possible because the county came to the table and other. Other. Organizations came to the table on that. So I do think it's something that we could do and put more. And I think we are doing that. We're talking more about it behind the scenes, but just for the purposes of the public, no, you know, that's like something that's being talked about and being worked on here. And I think we should do more of that work.
Yeah. So Dorsey Estates was. Also funded by the Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. I chair the Impact Investment Committee and it's a home run from our perspective.
Absolutely.
So are you saying you want the county to, because. We'd love to invest in more opportunities like that. Are you saying you want more opportunities for Dorsey Estate type? Programs where there's the opportunity for homeownership and generational wealth building through the, the. Occurrence of homeownership and families.
Yeah, I think so. I think that site is a little unique because half of it is not going to be permanently affordable, but. I would, you know, I think sometimes you have to have a mixture, but I think we can do, you know, if, if there's an opportunity to have full sites that are all. Different levels of area median income. What I also care a lot about in this space is making sure that we're not. Segregating and creating pockets of poverty. There's a lot of affordable housing in one ward in the city of Ypsilanti, the Dorsey Estate project, and then another project that is not really named yet, but the. The project's going to be breaking ground soon is in Ward Two, but up until that point, there really hadn't been any other affordable housing in the city of Ypsilanti outside of Ward One. So that's important to me as well, just because. I don't know, you know, it's, it's different in other parts of the county, but in Ypsilanti, you can see where the redlining occurred. So I think in terms of like the county's goal as adopted around equity, like that's really important is making sure that we're not. Creating additional pockets of poverty that we're actually creating mixed income style developments too. So. Dorsey Estates 40, 60, 80% AMI. I think there's opportunity to expand that even higher to that way. You know, 100 and even 120 AMI. So yeah, at least for me, yes, yes, I would love that.
I'd love it too. Commissioner.
Thank you. I think we were all big fans of the Dorsey Estate model here. If I remember correctly, your predecessor voted against it though. Fortunately, but we would love to do more of that here and I'm just saying, you know, that's accurate information. But I'd say that we are looking to do more pathways towards homeownership. That's one of the reasons that we formed the Financial Equity Center. So the Racial Equity Office has been doing a lot of work specifically around trying to create more pathways to homeownership. So that's something that we're very interested in. Another item I wanted to bring up is we're talking about housing right now. And if you're, if you weren't in Board Pearl, you can look at, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but our Commission on Aging gave public comment. Today for the working session. So it appears in working session, but not in the BOC. Meeting one, and they wanted to just give us some things to think about as we have this conversation. So they wanted to reiterate that we should take a look at the needs summary that they released in April 2022. And then the first several points here are all related to housing and housing for the aging community. So just to spew the points that I'll throw out here, according to 2022 census data, there are 55,322 adults aged 65 or older in the county. That's 15.1% of the population and SimCO expected that number to grow to nearly 119,000 by 2045. They identified affordable and available housing as one of the largest unmet needs. It's not enough affordable housing. 26% of homeowners 65 or older are paying more than 30% of their income on housing costs. More than half of them are renters and 53, that's 53% of them are cost burden. And then transportation as it relates to affordable housing is another key issue highlighted by them. So then you can see the whole public comment in there. About other things they want us to think about here, but housing specifically for that population is something we should be thinking about too. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes.
I'd also throw out there the idea of maintaining people in their own homes. Kind of plays off what Commissioner Hodge was mentioning from the Commission on Aging. That the county treasurer, I think was here, I don't know if she's still here, and her initiative to. Help people remain in their homes that may be experiencing tax issues. You know. You can talk about weatherization, minor home repair, many of these things impact older adults, they impact. People, you know, with lower incomes as well. But the idea of doing things that can enable people to remain living in their homes. I think is an important part of this as well. So I wanted to add that to the discussion.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner Robbie.
Agree with Matuszewski. Very well said. I did have kind of a. Question, question. I don't know that anybody can answer it here, but back to the Dorsey Estates conversation. And the fact that you did, were able to achieve a mixed, mixed income development. That is in contrast to what I believe the board was told when it comes to the Platte Road site. And the fact that they were only able to develop market rate housing and removed the affordable housing component from that. Claiming that they didn't have, they couldn't get HUD money or something like that. So I wonder what makes Dorsey Estates different in terms of what, what you were able to do. Sorry that this is kind of a specific question, but.
Yeah, a community benefits ordinance with like strict agreement. We went through a whole process with the developers. It's mostly being, well. The developers actually received a significant amount of money from the state of Michigan recently for gap funding, 12 million. There are a lot of private agencies that put money into this, the county put money in. So it was private lenders that bought down the cost of that. So. They're beholden to that agreement, that CBO agreement that council adopted and it was adopted. After a body of community members chaired by one council person, me, we came up with recommendations and the board approved that. So they can't. Like, and they, sorry, the reason why the CBO came in play is because that was city-owned property. So if for whatever reason they try to go away from the agreement, they wouldn't get the land. There's like clawbacks in place for that. So the key is having, in my opinion, is having some sort of process for. Benefits and the benefit to us was the affordability that was built into our agreement. So yeah, I think that's how you get around it. The city of Ann Arbor does not have a CBO process.
Right. Well, I mean, it was, so it was county land.
County land. So the county could adopt a CBO.
And we, I mean, we had a resolution that granted them the land to begin with, and the affordable housing was a component of it. But then they came back and basically were like, we, we can't, I don't know what the full story was, but they claimed that they couldn't get HUD money because it was part of, they were doing mixed income. That was the story I was told and.
Yeah, they're not getting HUD money for Dorsey Estates. It's all like, I think what is different now is that. In Lansing, there's a lot of funding that has been allocated towards like missing middle. And so that's funding that they were able to get for missing middle housing and then. Yeah, there's a lot of like private lenders involved too, and like Ann Arbor Area Community Foundation. So I think that's the difference. Dorsey Estates is very unique and I hope that more communities can see the success of that. Once it's, you know, we're still. Early on, but I think that's the difference is that there's money from the state, there's money from private lenders. And there's like this agreement to do it. So like they wouldn't be able to get the state funding if they went back on that, right?
I guess, I guess I, what I'll say is I think that's a great, you know, an interesting model that I think we can look at. I would like to reiterate my disappointment in the Platte Road site. After having worked on it for so many years to see that the affordable housing component of it, which was, I think, the most important component of it. Is the part that's not moving forward and they're developing housing for rich people, but not housing for, you know, those that need it the most. So I, I'm quite saddened to see, you know, the state of that project right now.
I think Commissioner Labar and then Commissioner Beaman.
And it's, it's specific that because. We, we do have the affordable housing on that site in conjunction with Avalon. They have not received the, the, the tax credit yet. That's, that's been the holdup there. But it, it's not a prohibition or any deviation from the agreement. That, that we signed, yeah. So if, if, you know, I'm, I'm happy to. Get a, a written update on that, but I, I don't think that is the case that it's not. Able to develop that affordable housing there. It, it's that external mechanism. That they are waiting on.
I guess my point is the whole idea of giving them the land to begin with was that they would put affordable housing there and the developers not putting affordable housing there. They're relying on Avalon to secure the funding to put affordable housing, which is not. I believe a, a good faith understanding of what the board had originally intended with that site. We wanted affordable housing and market rate housing. That's what, that's what the board was told. And now what's happening is the site was divided into two. To the point that Commissioner Somerville made, that, that's not the same thing as incorporating affordable housing into a development. And so now they've. Segmented out a third of the site to say, okay, this is where we're going to have the affordable housing and good luck finding the funding for it. And that, that I don't believe was the intention at all for giving that land to the, the developer, but this, this is a very specific tangent. What I was trying to really get at with this. Go ahead.
I was going to say, and I think to your point, what I think Commissioner Hodge and I both were getting at would avoid this.
Yeah. And so, and that's what I was trying to understand because I don't want to replicate.
At least I think we're on the same page about it. And so like Dorsey Estates, like. You're not going to know who's living in the 40% AMI. House, like you're not going to know whose mortgage is at based off of the 40% AMI or the 80% AMI or someone who doesn't even. Have something based off of those three different AMI levels. So. Yeah, you're not going to know. And it's in the middle of a neighborhood.
Yeah. So I think making sure that we're very deliberate about those community benefit ordinances and having something at the county level. That is very, you know, intentional when, when it comes to these developments and making sure that, that we're holding developers accountable.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Beaman.
Sorry, I was just jumping in here with. A thought that I had again, kind of bringing people to the table and resources. So when I spoke with our former head of OCD. She had talked about, you know, that I do have the only USDA backed housing in the county, but all of our townships are eligible. Including portions of Ypsilanti Township are eligible. And there are home repair loan grants, single family housing disaster. There are programs for. Self-help grants, organizations that are administering new construction or rehabilitation, housing sites. Preservation, there's all of this funding that exists, but I don't know that. We know about it or that our municipalities know about it so that we can come together on these things. And I'm sorry, it's not going to help city of Ann Arbor and it's not going to help city of Ypsilanti, but it is going to have a deep impact on our townships.
Right. So that awareness of all of the available funding streams becomes an important part of the strategic plan. Okay. So good point. Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you. I hate to keep bringing up challenges, but I think one of the challenges with this particular topic is that it's not just the funding stream piece. I appreciate that in Commissioner Beaman's district, there are local governments that are wanting to partner with us to tackle this issue. That's not the situation for all of us, right? So we look at our second largest municipality, Ypsilanti Township. We don't got the partnership there or the interest, I think, on their end to do something about the affordable housing crisis. So that, so that creates this added challenge, particularly because in Michigan. We don't have control over zoning. It's nice that we're not subject to local zoning as the county, but that's a part of the challenge we have with trying to advance any of our affordable housing. Initiatives is that we need the local governments to be on board for zoning purposes unless we want to go. You know, go real raw, wild and purchase property in a township that doesn't want to participate and then use it for public housing. Just saying, that's a thing we could do, but. Yeah. That might not go over so well in some places. So it's that partnership or the need for partnerships is the challenge.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. And then I guess just still kind of like consistent with. Some realistic goals for increasing affordable and available housing. I'm a big fan of urban infill and there's a lot of space even in this, Ypsie City is very small. But we do have a lot of space for development and I've been talking with. The administrator and other staff about some opportunities potentially, and they've shared me and on some things that they've flagged. So. I would, I would like us to look more closely at where we can redevelop existing buildings, especially. Ypsilanti City has the Transit Center. We have access to, you know, the university and also we're going to have some, some new business coming in with the redevelopment of the College of Business. So we'll have U of M Hospital there. Providing services and job opportunities. So, and there's other things happening that are going to create the need for more housing in the city of Ypsilanti. Um, and there's other things happening that are gonna create the need for more housing in the city of Ypsilanti, um. And if we don't focus on that, more poor people are gonna be pushed out. Um, one of the uh, impacts of. Um, some of our neighbors not investing is just the pressure that it puts on the city and even though the city just approved. A site for three hundred units of affordable housing in, in Board Two, um. You know, it, that's gonna help a little bit, but the demand's so high, like, and I know I wasn't around when the last, um. Housing study was done, but I, I mean, someone throughout one of our last few meetings ago, like, just how many units were. Missing, or maybe it was earlier tonight, I don't know, but we have not kept up with demand and there are a lot of, um. A- as business growth happens and as southeastern Michigan continues to grow because Michigan is. Going to be a place where lots of people are moving from the West Coast as the climate crisis continues to progress, we will see climate, we already. I've met climate refugees from California who have moved to Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti, um, so it's a real thing that we need to be prepared for as industry comes here. Um, and as we need to meet the need of affordable housing, so. Yeah, we just need more of it, but focusing on some of our orbit, urban centers, I think is, um, gonna be helpful because we already have. The transportation routes and it's better long-term for our carbon footprint.
Commissioner Scott.
Uh, speaking of carbon footprint, Commissioner Somerville and everyone, I think that, uh. As we're talking about developing some of these affordable housing and housing, um. With wraparound services, I would like to think about how we think about developing these. Um, i- if this is a question that we're gonna get into, I'd love to make sure that we're thinking about the environmental aspect of this as well. So if we're building housing, how we can think about incorporating things like solar panels and geothermal because I. You guys have heard me say it over and over and over again, the people who are gonna feel the effects of climate change the most are people who can't, uh, who can afford it the least. So if we're thinking about creating affordable housing with wraparound services, one of those wraparound services could be considered making those housing developments. Climate resilient. And so I think that should be definitely a part of what we're thinking about. And there's like a ton, we have a lot of people in this community, some people who I'm, you know, friends with who do work on this, on creating. Um, the idea of mixed-use, um, areas and using, there's something the CDC has talked about, um, when you're talking about creating mixed-use. Or mixed-income communities, this fit well concept that I'd love to see us think about too very clearly, which incorporates. Um, into each one of these developments. It talks about how the built environment impacts your health. And it really creating an active design there, so getting things like, making sure there's opportunities for people to have physical activity. Occupant safety, um, it addresses morbidity in the community, social activity, uh, social equity for vulnerable populations. Making sure people have feelings of well-being, community health, uh, and feelings of safety. Um, so those, um. Those things I think are things I'd like to see us incorporate into this discussion.
All right, perfect. Did you have something else, Commissioner Robbie?
Quickly, I, I think, uh, underlining all the things that have already been said, um. I, and I've said this in many meetings before, but since this is a retreat and you're taking notes, I really feel like the community needs to set up a housing commission. In order to ac- accomplish a lot of the things that we're talking about here.
Agree, it's on the list, so.
Yeah, it's on the list. And so what I'm, I'm hearing a lot of ideas and there's a lot going on here, so I wanna make sure that, that we're. Kind of chunking this down into some priorities. Um, so looking at the existing list in this conversation, what I heard was that you wanna create. Um, a housing commission that will look at, uh, either. Building sustainable, healthy communities. Or partnering with other organizations to build or repurpose, um, housing and that. We're doing that while avoiding getting into municipal zoning because we don't wanna do that. But that we're also looking at preserving the housing of, um, taxpayers so that they can remain in their homes when they're at risk. With some sensitivity to the aging population who are more at risk in that regard, um, and that you. Wish to explore all the different avenues of funding streams that are available to support these goals. That's a lot. What do you think is accomplishable in the twenty-three, twenty-four term?
I guess I'll just jump in, the start of the commission to move this forward. I think that's like the first step.
Commissioner Scott?
Identifying county land that could be used. Well, yeah, I mean, even if we can't get space plan done, like as part of this, you know. Identifying the county spaces or the county lands that could be available for some of this development. That, that seems like it's a primary step.
Yeah, those other things kinda come after all of that. I'm after that. All right, yes, please.
One thing, and I think this could be achievable, it could always change. Could we figure out what local governments, like some of the ones mentioned by Commissioner Beaman, would want to partner with us on this? Because I, we have a sense of who doesn't.
We know your township does not, so, you know.
Okay. Perfect, yes.
Sorry, I do have one other concept I wanted to throw into the mix on housing.
Yes.
Um, and that is that, you know, we talked a little bit about the foreclosure piece, um, and, um, you know. Commissioner, I almost said representative, Commissioner Metjeski talked about keeping people in their homes. And in the context of, of course, of weatherization and all that stuff, but, you know, also wanna make sure that we're talking about the context of, um, you know, mortgage foreclosure. And I know that that, you know, obviously has been a bigger issue in the past, but it's still, it's an ongoing issue. And as we look at that issue, um. You know, I've heard too many stories of, uh, elderly people, speaking of the, you know, aging population, elderly people. That have tried to build generational wealth that they can then hand on to their children. And, um, suddenly towards the end of their life, you know, they're on a fixed income, they get evicted through foreclosure, mortgage foreclosure, they get kicked out of their house, suddenly. All that generational wealth that they tried to build is out the window. And so building protections for our residents, um, you know, to be able to not just stay in their homes, but keep those assets in the family. Um, so that they can, you know, continue, continue on that legacy. Um, and of course, I, you know, most of the stories that I've heard, to be quite honest, involve, um, you know, uh. Black residents in our community that are getting, um, ev- evicted from their homes through the mortgage foreclosure. Pro- process and, um, so the, the, the racist elements, I think, of, of the mortgage system continue. Uh, very deeply in our community and, and that, I think, gets to, you know, um. I, the core of what, uh, we should really be doing.
Got it, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Scott.
Oh, I'm sorry, I just, you know, we provided a little bit of funding, I think we gave five hundred thousand dollars to, to. Our treasurers program to try to keep people in their homes that are facing eviction for tax foreclosure. And maybe if, you know, we're getting really serious about that, because that program, as, as she described to us, is a program that just is cyclical. It replenishes itself. And so maybe there's a greater investment we could consider making in that program as well to try to help. People keep in their homes, um, because I think so far it's proved to do exactly what it said it would do. Thanks.
And I mean, it be, it almost becomes like a, a taking, a hostile taking of communities. Uh, because you have these wealthier banks that are looking at communities, uh, for, for their own investments. They're trying to make money off of it. And so of course they wanna kick people out of their homes so that they can resell those homes for two and three times the value. Um, and it becomes, you know, the, the modern day, it's gentrification, it's modern-day colonialism, it's taking. Um, assets that people have fought their whole life that they've worked for, taking those assets from them right out from under them at the end of their life. And, and, you know, turning a massive profit on them.
Yes. All right. Let's talk about East Side Community and Recreation. So again, through the lens of what is able to be accomplished in the twenty-three, twenty-four term. What would you like to do in this particular area?
I'd like for us to get shovels in ground by the end of the year. That's the, the hope. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this might be an easier one to check off, so, I mean, it's still hard, right? We need to, we're about halfway there with the funding at this point. Uh, hopeful to be receiving funding from the state, and if that happens, I don't know why we wouldn't be able to get shovels in the ground by the end of the. I keep looking at Administrator Dale because he, he's said that too, that it's a realistic thing. I always, uh, like to call out this piece of it, but can you remind us how quickly you built the Delana Center?
Well, I s- I certainly didn't do it alone. I, I looked to the back and Jason Fee was here at that time.
Jason, all right.
Yeah, so, but, uh, from the time that we broke ground to occupancy was eighty-nine days. And, and that included shutting down, uh, Huron Street on a football Saturday for some of the underground and footing, so.
Yeah, thank you for the reminder. So I'd say that if we can get the, the funding that we need, I'd love for us to have shovels in the ground by the end of the year. That would be my. View of success on this.
The breaking ground by December thirty-first of twenty-three.
Yes.
Got it. Commissioner Lee?
I don't wanna pick on you, sir, Commissioner, but, um, I know before that. You know, you want, you had some, some concerns or questions, so I think that this is probably the time for us to discuss that. Um, just on, um. You know, there was a few things that you had concerns on, I was just wondering if you wanted to discuss, um, and get some clarification so. That we're all on the same board and, and know what, you know, is happening with this because it's something that, um, we need, so. You know.
Can you help me? I'm, I'm sorry, can you help me understand what we're?
Um, I think, I believe, um, it was about. Um, just the partnership with YMCA, um, but we'll also have. Yeah, with the Eastside Rec Center. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's not just, um, going to be YMCA, but I know you, you had concerns and questions about that. Um, and it's gonna be a partnership, but YMCA, it will not just be, you know, YMCA. It, it, it'll be a partnership and, and I just, you know, wanna know what the concerns were because you were concerned.
I was concerned, um, yeah, so we're talking about East Side, East Side Rec Center. I mean, ba- basically, the, the concern comes from a place of. I wanna make sure that there's equivalent services, uh, on the east side of the county than what the residents in my district have with Mary Lou Murray. Um, and what I don't want to happen is for there to be, um. Desperate treatment, basically, in, in both facilities. I believe that having a publicly funded, publicly-run facility, um, is. Is that frankly, the, the, the way that the community can have the most impact on what happens in that building or on the grounds of that building. And the minute there's another organization involved, you have other interests, you have another board of directors, you have their interests. Um, and frankly, you know, they have their own structure of the rates that they charge. Um, they have their own culture of, you know, how people perceive their organization. Um, and, you know, whenever I grew up thinking of the Y as an organization that you had to pay to get into. Um, and the, when I was a kid, yeah, there were some programs that I could participate in, but it wasn't all of them and. Frankly, the one in Ann Arbor feels like it attracts a wealthier population. My concern is that I want the, whatever facilities we build on the east side of the county to, to be. Open and accessible to everybody and to have the most, um. Community input and, and control, because it's not just input, it's in, input and then control over what happens there. Um, and then the other issue that I had brought up too was wanting to make sure that, in, in some ways, I feel like. We, we rely, and this is a concept that kind of applies in a variety of different spaces, both to the housing that we were talking about and the nonprofit stuff. I, I want the county to start thinking more about ways that it can bring services and, you know, uh, uh, projects. In-house so that we as a county can do it, that, that the taxpayers, that the board of commissioners, that we can do these things. And we have, and we rely less on outsourcing those services to external organizations to do them. Because usually what happens with outsourcing is the, the product value declines. Or the working conditions are lessened. We have you, a unionized staff, we have asked me working in our Mary Lou Murray facility. I wanna unionize staff at the East Side Rec Center. I think the workers at an East Side Rec Center deserve every bit. Um, you know, a union just like the folks at Mary Lou Murray do. So I wanna make sure that we're treating our staff the same too. Um, so that's, that's really the, the philosophy that I was approaching it from. Um, and, and I'd rather see. I'd rather see us have maximum, uh, public oversight and. The, the best possible treatment for the, for the staff, and I think that the way to do that is make sure that they're unionized, make sure that they're county staff. So that, that's kinda where I was coming from on that.
Commissioner Somerville?
Yeah, thanks. Um, so really excited about this topic. Um. I've been working really hard in Lansing to try to bring home some additional funding for this site, um, with. With our members of the Washington delegation. Um, I. Started out the conversation during my time on city council in twenty-nineteen when there was going to be a rec center on Whittaker Road. And, um, wow, was it heartbreaking when that project didn't happen because we put. A lot of our weight at the city behind the funding needed to create an access, accessible walking path over ninety-four freeway. Um, so I have, you know, I'm really excited about this project. It's right in the heart of the most need in, in. The district that I serve, um, but it is very far away from a piece of my district that would have. Had the most access to a site on Whittaker Road, so, um, I really want to make sure that what the East Side Racking Community Center is. Is accessible for people who need it most in my district, because I think people, quite frankly, who can afford to access. Recreation already do it, um, and the people who can't get that support, um, that's should be the focus, I think, of this center, so. Um, I'm, I'm kind of fifty-fifty on whether that's a YMCA or a county-run facility. I. I like the idea of the county being the, the leader and, um, developing, you know. The, both the rec center and the community center aspect of it, because in my head, there are people who are not affiliated with YMCA already doing. Recreation work in Superior Township and Ypsilanti Township and Ypsilanti City with kids, and so they already have those connections and. I want them to be the executive directors of the rec center and community center and they don't work for the YMCA, so, um. I know I've talked a little bit about this with, um, with the administrator and I obviously like. We haven't signed anything saying that this is gonna be a YMCA, um, but I, I, my goals for this is. Is that we actually get something built, um, and I think what I would like to see is a product that serves. The people in most need, both with access to recreational, um. Space, but also community support and having the county having a present there, presence there just in terms of like. Access to O C E D and, and healthcare, um, where the site is located now is in the middle of a grocery desert, um. There, you know, people can't like easily access services, so, um, that's, you know. Where I, like, my vision for this is like. An accessible space, both for recreation and community needs, um, run by people who are already doing all of this work and. Um, for people who, you know, stop by Park Ridge or, um, Silicon More Meadows on a Saturday in the summer. There are people who aren't elected officials that have been investing time and youth. Um, and those are like the voices that I want to kind of drive the conversation on the direction of the count, the county takes, honestly. Um, and they really haven't been, um, their voices haven't really been represented that well, and I don't think it's not anybody at this table's fault, actually. Um, but I know that the administrator is actively working with them to pull them in and make sure that their voices are heard because. I, I think it's the people that are already working with our youth that should be really, um, the center to this.
So Commissioner Scott and then Robbie.
Thank you. I'm so, I, I guess I'm wondering, like, we have this goal that I, I've seen like everybody at the table felt really excited about. Like a shovel in the ground by December thirty-first. There's some barriers, is this the place to try to figure that out? Because. We spent a lot of time tonight talking about how we want this to be a more transparent discussion. I mean, it might not be tonight, what time is it, six-twenty-six? It's definitely not tonight, um, but. These are, these are some pretty philosophical. Um, differences that pe- maybe people have or don't have about how the four, the, how this rec center is formed. I don't know if I'm hearing a concern about location or not, but, okay, not, not a concern, okay, all right. But this idea about, is it the county, is it the Y, who's staffing it, who's doing it, um. After we get it built?
But, but it's a partnership, so it's not just the Y, it's not, it's, it's, you know.
You might need those discussions bef- before it's built. But that we should speed up those discussions, because I don't want it to stop it from being built.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I think, uh, we are moving down a path to where, A, we have talked about repeatedly the county owning this parcel and the county being the principal decision maker. Certainly, we have a number of partners, external stakeholder groups that, uh, have had an opportunity to engage. There's more to come. And in fact, as you heard Commissioner Somerville say, I am convening a conversation uh, next week with some youth in the community, uh, that, uh, well, this is an opportunity for them to have voice in this space, specifically to the why. We began this conversation with, uh, who does what best framework? And the why was at the table as we started to, to build this out. Uh, but by and large, what I want to say to this body, this, this board, is that we talked about the county owning this parcel for a reason. And that was so that we can drive what goes on the site. We certainly know we need to do it through partnership. And we're going to try to make sure that that happens. Uh, we are e- engaging with, uh, all the cities and townships that are impacted by this, hoping that they will participate in the right way. I think there might be a space for one of our healthcare systems to, to engage. We certainly have talked about childcare. We have talked about, uh, opportunities for, uh, maybe even housing on the site. So really looking at this parcel as an opportunity for generational change in that community. And we, I heard you guys say many times today, transformational change is what you desire. So leveraging our dollars in the right way will produce all of that. And I am optimistic cautiously, but optimistic that we can have a shovel in the ground this year.
Thank you. Commissioner Robbie.
Yeah, two things. I, I want to further emphasize some of the things I just, uh, mentioned. When this first came up, I was still on the board. It was twenty fourteen, I think, twenty fifteen, maybe. And the why was brought up in the context of saving the county money. That's, that's how it was brought up. Was we don't, we are not going to be able to afford ongoing operations for this facility, so we need to partner with somebody else to run it, basically. That's, that was the context. And just as a, just as a reference point, at our two Parks Commission's meetings ago, we had a presentation on how each of our county parks facilities fares in terms of revenue in, revenue out. What is basically the subsidy that the County Parks Commission and the county ultimately gives to each facility? And basically, all of our facilities run deficit, I think, except the water park, maybe, and that's like Slim. Pierce Lake, yeah. Uh, but they're, they're close too. Uh, but the Mary Lou Murray Rec Center, for example, I believe we give about eight hundred thousand dollars a year towards the operational, you know, to be able to sustain that facility. Um, and so then the question is, if we're giving an annual allocation of basically a million dollars to a facility in Ann Arbor, why can we not give an annual allocation of a million dollars to a facility in Ypsilanti to continue the ongoing operations of that facility? There will be revenue coming in because there will be, you know, gym memberships, all that stuff, just like we have at Mary Lou Murray. But the idea that, oh, we should contract with somebody else so that the county doesn't have any financial liability in that, that's, that is the wrong beginning conversation. I think.
I wasn't going there with that.
No, no, no. And I know, I know that's not where you were going. I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's how this, that's why I have developed such a strong opinion about why the county should run this, because I believe that we should be allocating the resources, not just in a one-time buy-the-property basis, but on an annual ongoing, let's keep this facility operational. And the other thing I want to say before, before I give the mic up is this, I believe, yes, shovel in the ground by the end of the year, that's, that's great. But I also think that we should zoom out a little bit here, and in some ways, I think that we should look at, um, where Parks is spending its money geographically and look at creating, basically, not just looking at Eastside Rec Center as one facility, but looking at what is the east side space plan from a Parks perspective? Where are we investing? Are we investing? Are we putting all our eggs in one basket? And yes, we need to get that facility done and we should put all, all the resources we can. I'll vote for an allocation tonight if we need to, to buy that property, whatever we need. I'm all about it. But let's also look at other properties across the east side that we can invest in. You know, whether it's smaller parks in the city of Ypsilanti, whether it's larger parks in Ypsilanti or Superior Township. Let's create, you know, a, a broader green space portfolio on the east side. This issue came up at our Parks Commission meeting, because I think I mentioned this the last meeting. We're using, um, I believe church facilities to run youth camp programming on the east side right now. Why can't we have county properties? Why can't we invest more in facilities in Parks buildings where we can do programming? I think we shouldn't stop at the Eastside Rec Center. We should look at an east side master plan for recreation.
The Eastside Rec and continue.
Yeah, start with that, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Um, I think that in, in the last few meetings that we've had about this, we made it clear that we didn't want this to be titled, um, a rec center. The community is listed first for a reason. And when you list rec, in my opinion, you minimize the impact, um, of what this center is supposed to do. And so I just want to refresh that, because I keep hearing it only mentioned as an east side rec center and comparing it to the other rec centers, um, that Washtenaw County operates. This is intended to be an east side community and recreational facility. And that makes a difference, because part of the intention is to have, um, some of the nonprofit slash human service agencies present in that space, available to provide support to the community where they live. And so that's, that's a very important piece. I will say that I support labor, but I am concerned about our ability to, um, give a fighting chance to the residents that live in that community for them to have an opportunity to be employed. Um, and not be, um, left out of the scenario, because they may not currently be a Washtenaw County employee. Um, and so that's, to me, that's very important. I think it's critical, actually. Um, and not that I want to go down this road, but if we're going to talk about, you know, um, bringing services in-house, I don't hear any conversation about bringing all of the human services agencies in-house. We're going to look at that and let's just look at the whole thing.
Right, right. Commissioner Dell, or excuse me, Administrator Dell, you had your hand up.
Please, please, no commissioner attached to the front.
I just want to say.
Not because that's a negative connotation, but I don't want that responsibility.
Ran away from.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, listen, a couple of things. I, I just want to remind everyone uh, that we've been talking loosely about a number of things today, because I think it makes sense at this point. This has always been framed in a way that will afford us the opportunity to do the right thing for that community. I continue to talk about it, uh, as an anchor for that community, and I don't want to get out ahead of the board. Please don't hear that. But when I think about, uh, an area of our community that thinks very different about the role of county government than most, this is an excellent opportunity. It's the convergence, convergence of so many forces. Number one, there are enemies of trust, as we've all talked about. This is the third false start for, uh, some kind of facility on the eastern part of the county. We've been at this for over twenty years. This body has made a strong commitment, the strongest possible commitment to this project, and you guys did it through resolution and, uh, financial action. It is an opportunity to eliminate some of YCS's debt, an opportunity to bring county government to the people. We have talked about, uh, meeting our residents where they're at. This is, as you all know, a community that's challenged with transportation issues, social determinants of health aren't addressed largely because some of them don't have access and don't have transportation. So all of those things converge on this parcel if done properly. We also have an opportunity to address childcare, so that we can make sure that we start to rebuild the family unit in a part that, in a part of our community that ranks lowest on the opportunity index. So I am encouraging you all to state of course. We will certainly get to the finish line, I believe, and do it in a way that the county can hold its head high and say, this is an opportunity, uh, to illustrate to our community, we're thinking differently about government. And then lastly, as, as was indicated a couple of times today, I will need the help of this body to determine how those operations are funded. We can build this thing great, uh, but the, as you all know, the operating costs are, are the piece that we'll need to lean into. And that is going to have to be an all-hands-on-deck, uh, kind of discussion. And it's not just Parks and Rec. Uh, I'm hoping that this body will pledge some operating dollars uh, to make sure that anybody that wants to use that facility has the ability to use it.
Commissioner Somerville.
Thank you. Yeah, one thing that I want to add, I know we're coming up, um, pretty close on the end of the meeting, but, um, since January, I've been attending monthly, um, a small working group in Superior Township. Um, part of the parcel that we'll be purchasing is, is in Superior Township. The Superior Township government has totally like wrapped around this project. Um, and we have subcommittees that we all meet once a month. We get an update from the county, um, and then we break out into subcommittees on different areas, and one of them's programming and all of that. I wa- I just want to share that at the last one, it was just, what, two weeks ago? There's a lot of, um, feelings around this, just because it's been twenty years and people have concerns, um, around seeing it happen. And one of the things that I shared with that group at the time was that the project's happening, whether or not it's a YMCA, whether or not all of the local municipalities support the project, the project's happening. So I'm just sharing that here to my colleagues, because I committed myself to that. Um, and I think I just, I feel really confident about where the state of Michigan is at right now too. So, um, I think that there are a lot of factors that are giving us positive out, that will hopefully give us positive outcomes in this, like, coming months. Um, so I just, I, I just want to share that, um, sometimes these conversations can be kind of heated, or not everybody might be on the same page right now, but that group of folks, they're all volunteers, um. It was a more intense meeting than normal, and I, I, it was nice to be able to tell them that it's happening no matter what. Um, so I think if I could offer any sort of like advice here for everybody on this body is like, it's going to happen. We need to keep saying that it's going to happen, because there are people who don't want it to happen. That's like the biggest part of this. There are people who really don't want it to happen, and so I want to make sure that we can all overcome that together, because it's going to change generations.
Commissioner Beaman.
I'll keep it brief. Um, I love, uh, Commissioner Sanders' push for the word "community", because that needs to be part of it. And I hope, as I'm not as deeply involved in the process as, as many of you are on, on the eastern side, um, that we are bringing the different units in our community together. I was excited to hear a health system mentioned. That's important to me. I also would like to see higher education pulled in, so like Washtenaw Community College. I don't know Eastern and their, um, I know they have a similar, uh, program for high school students. I don't know what types of conversations have happened, but as a WCC instructor, you know, we do have courses aimed at youth and outside of the main campus and that sort of thing. So I would love to see, again, as much of the community, the greater community involved and wrapping their arms around this project, so that when we do hear those people saying nay, we have not just the county, but we have all of these other entities with us, supporting us.
Commissioner Robbie.
Yeah, so just a few things I want to say. Uh, one, in response to something Commissioner Sanders said, which is, I actually a hundred percent do think that we should be looking at taking some of our human services, um, in-house. Um, and so I'm appreciative that you actually brought that up, because I do think it is something we should be absolutely looking at. And I think in some ways, we can do some of the services that we're paying others to do now better. And the same philosophy for human services applies that, to what I was saying, you know, with the, uh, with the why, that a lot of the services that, uh, external nonprofit agencies are providing, they're doing it, um, you know, without the use of, uh, of union labor. They're doing it without a lot of other things that the county could have. Um, and so I a hundred percent do think that we should be looking at that. Um, as to the piece about, you know, community versus rec center, a hundred percent, and, and hats off to you for, uh, underlining that. The reason I was referring to it as rec center was simply because my understanding was that the YMCA was only looking at running the rec center component of it, and that the community center component of it was going to be run by the county, as was the remaining, uh, park facility around the actual building. That was my understanding. Maybe I misunderstood that. But that's why I was referring to it as a rec center. And the last thing I will say quickly is, I guess it sounds like the, the land purchasing component of it still hasn't been done. And to the point that Commissioner Somerville just made about this is going to happen, um, I, a hundred percent, this is going to happen. And, uh, I don't know what, what exactly it would take, but I feel like ASAP, the county should purchase that property. And I don't know if it takes a vote of this body, maybe at our next meeting, to put the dollars forward, if we haven't already done that. But even if it's not, frankly, even if it's not the Parks Commission that buys it, maybe the county should buy it first and then, like deed it over to Parks or something, but I just feel like we need to act on at least that piece of it, even if we're not breaking ground. Let's buy the damn property and, and get the ball rolling on that.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. I mean.
Just, just to respond, so I have a meeting in two weeks with the president and superintendent of YCS. Uh, we are trying to do our due diligence on the site. We need to do the environmental. We need to do the upfront work on the site before engaging in a purchase agreement. We have had some preliminary discussions about the purchase of the site. I would like to purchase the site for no more than the debt that's owed on the parcel. So we will, uh, if, if the board wants to take some action at a, at a upcoming meeting to direct us to engage in those conversations, I think that's great, that's helpful. We are on that path. So, and one other thing that I want to say, and this gets back to what Commissioner Beaman just indicated. I've been thinking about this project as a town hall kind of framework for that parcel, where all of those services are converging on one site. And no matter what they are, we'll, we'll get to all of that later, but I think that's what serves the community best. And then lastly, if we purchase the site, there is one other piece that I think we can do in the interim before we put a shovel in the ground to signal to that community that we mean business. And that is to tear down the building that has been condemned and sitting in that community. So there's a lot of work for us to do and a lot of wins that we can have over the summer to let this community know that we are serious about this and we will get this to the finish line.
To wrap this up, because I know there's only, we have two other topics to try to get to, uh, would, I don't think we're going to get there. But, uh, Commissioner Robbie, just, uh, you, you are correct in that the YMCA, under the current, what we've been talking about, would operate the recreation piece of it. We've been trying to be very purposeful about using, using the language "community and recreation center", because earlier on, when we started moving down this path of getting very serious about it, there was a contingent of people in the community, uh, that were trying to say, it's not going to be a community center. That, back when we were using the language of rec center, there were some people that were, uh, spreading that narrative. So we've made a decision from a messaging perspective to try to be really clear about saying "community and recreation center", to make it clear, uh, and make it harder for misinformation to spread, that it's a large parcel, it's twenty-six acres. So we're going to be doing a number of things with it.
The other part of it too is that when the YMCA was supposed to go on Whittaker Road, there were separate conversations in Superior Township going on about just a community center, and then it morphed into this. So, yes, history.
So Commissioner Hodge is correct. We have, uh, we have actually one more topic, but two more topics to talk about. New funding sources and energy and sustainability are supposed to be ending right now. So you have a little bit of a break before the meeting.
Yeah, I'll just, can everybody kind of give me like a thumbs up or thumbs down? Should we pause here? Because I think we maybe need to reset before our meeting starts at seven. Yeah, okay, all right. Karen, thank you so much.
I'm going to transfer all of the notes I took into some actionable plans for your review. So you can expect that work product from me within a few days.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, all right, do we have any, um, sorry, I don't have my agenda in front of me. We don't have any items for.
Justin, not cool.
All favor.
All in favor.
Aye. Bring it on back. Ready to do some votes here. Get up. No. Hopefully we have spirited debate during first reading on one or more items. All right. We're going to get started with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. We're going to move right into roll call here.
Commissioner Beaman.
Present.
Commissioner Hodge.
Present.
Commissioner LaBarre. Commissioner Light.
Present.
Commissioner Machewski.
Present.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Here.
All right. The team's all here. All right. We'll move on to public participation. So here at the Board of Commissioners. You get three minutes for public comment. If you're joining us in the room, uh, you'll just come up to the podium, you'll state your name and where you live. Uh, and you'll be able to give comment for three minutes. We have a great color coded system right there. Starts at green, goes to yellow, ends at red. At red, I'm going to have to cut you off. So try not to make that happen. You're joining us online via Zoom. You can click the raise your hand icon. I'll call on you. Same rules apply. Say your name, where you're joining us from. You get three minutes. If you're joining us via Zoom, via the phone, you'll hit star six to raise your hand. I will call on you at some point. Hit star nine to unmute yourself and then you will do the same thing. You get three minutes, that's your name and where you're joining us from. Uh, anybody in the room like to give public comment? Come on down. Right there. Yep.
Hello. My name is Christian Wilson. I'm a high school student. I'm a high school, um, senior. I'm here for my government class and, uh, just here to report and. You know, have fun. I'm, I'm interested in the government and how government works. So it's pretty cool for me.
Thank you. Thank you. We're trying to make government fun here. Uh, I always forget to mention. So the way this works is after you give comment, we can't immediately respond. There's another item on the agenda for response. So please don't think us rude if we don't immediately get back to you. We all would always chomping at the bit to respond. But we are very excited to have you here. Anybody else like to give public comment? See nobody in the room? Anybody online?
Uh, yes, Chair, there is one person online, Courtney Vanderlon, uh, will be speaking.
Okay. Please state your name and where you are calling us from. You got three minutes.
My name is Courtney Vanderlon and I am a resident of Ypsilanti Township. Today is Older Michiganyans Day and many community members and service providers from across the state gathered in Lansing for it, including Commissioner Machewski. As we know and we're reminded of today, investing in our older adults both improves their quality of life and provides a cost benefit for the state and Washtenaw County. Nine out of 10 people want to age in their homes and it is undeniably the most cost effective option. But resources and supports are essential to making this happen. As Governor Whitmer reminded us today, it's our duty to make sure our seniors are taken care of with the dignity and respect that they deserve. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for the work that you have done so far to support older adults in our community. And also let you know that more support is desperately needed.
Thank you. Any other public comment online? Nope. Last call in the room? No. All right. I'll move into Commissioner Response to Public Comment. Anybody? Commissioner Machewski.
So yeah, I did not recruit that either. So, um. Uh, I was happy to serve as the MC for Older Michiganyans Day today and host a live stream event across the state. We were thrilled to be joined by Governor Whitmer. Uh, offering comments as well as a number of legislators, uh, including the majority and minority leaders from the state senate, the House Appropriations Chair. And others, um, highlighting a lot of issues. and others highlighting a lot of issues related to older adults that we talk a lot about here. So, thanks for the, for the comment, I really appreciate you highlighting that. And I, we have a Commission on Aging bylaw amendment on our agenda today as well, to hopefully improve that body. But it is Older Michiganyans Day and, you know, a day that we can, we can think about those issues and advocate on them. So I thank the commenter and the work of the Commission on Aging as well.
It's always beautiful when those come unsolicited. We also have a resolution tonight recognizing May as Older Americans Month, so stay tuned for that one. Any other Commissioner Response, Commissioner Beaman?
Thank you, Chair, I just wanna thank the students who came this evening. There are two students from Mylan High who came and we love to see them participating and encourage them to also get involved in our youth commission on the other end of the spectrum.
Excellent, anybody else, Commissioner Somerville?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna say I'm very bummed that I missed Older Michiganyan Day in Lansing today. I was really looking forward to being there actually because I promised several area agency on aging folks that I would, and then I realized that I had to get my windshield replaced today, so could not go to Lansing for work. And just, I just wanna add, I'm really grateful for the folks advocating for both local municipalities, county commissions, and the state to do more for older adults. I hope that we all are older adults someday.
Yep, all right, anybody else? See, no other hands, excellent. All right, well, we'll move right into, before I go into liaison reports, do we have any resolutions that we're giving out today? Anybody, are we giving any resolutions out to that? We, I know we have a number of ceremonial ones, but I don't know if anybody's here to receive them. I don't think so, we do not, so I'm gonna continue with our regularly scheduled programming liaison reports. Somebody got a liaison report for us? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you, Chair, I mainly give the liaison reports because they're fun and I know how much you love them.
I really enjoy them.
So, I'm brown-nosing, okay. But really and truly, the Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation Commission, as I've said, I enjoy so much. We had our meeting this past May ninth at Independence Lake County Park, so we got to take a field trip for our meeting. It was a lot of fun, and I just wanna note that one member of the Parks and Recreation Commission who lives in my district rode his bike to that meeting, and I think that that's a testimonial of the work that Parks is doing, that he was able to ride his bike from Ann Arbor up to Independence Lake. We reviewed claims reports, fund balance, recreation reports. We also had a presentation from Rutherford Pool and the original Mr. Rutherford's son came and talked to us at the Parks Commission, which was fascinating. We talked about the Learn to Swim programs that will be offered there this summer and reviewed the funding that Parks has already committed to Rutherford Pool. It's pretty phenomenal and it felt very good to hear from him and the work that they're doing there. We talked about creating a Michigan Folk School Advisory Committee with some establishment and bylaws for that committee. So, there's gonna be a lot of programming that they're gonna offer there, so just having an advisory committee on what they're gonna do at that folk school, they thought might be helpful. Of course, I feel like I wanna be on that committee too. We reviewed our NAP programs and other sales that we will be looking at and talked about, again, the Title IX Plaza that will be built on the border-to-border trail that will be very exciting when it opens. It's a great, really interesting design and highlighting, of course, women in sports. So, all in all, a very enjoyable meeting, fun to be at Independence Lake. Make sure you visit your Washtenaw County Parks and all the natural areas. It's really a resource and treasure we have.
Thank you, pure Washtenaw. Very nice. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Machewski?
I too make sure I come prepared because I know how much the Chair likes this. The Board of Public Works met this morning and I wanted to pass along just another note about the cleanup days that are gonna be beginning, the first one on June 24th, the registration is open. And you may remember, you now have to pre-register to go to a, one of the cleanup days. Within the first day of them opening up for the June 24th event in Northfield Township, they had 25% of the slots filled. After a week, 50% of the slots were filled. So if you have any interest in participating in that event at Northfield Township on June 24th, go online and register because they anticipate the slots filling up before that date. The second thing I wanted to mention is I'm one of the executive committee members at SEMCOG and I'm honored to be asked to be on a healthcare task force that's being conducted by the Metropolitan Affairs Coalition, which is a sister organization to SEMCOG that deals with public-private partnerships and does a lot of issue studies and been named to that and excited to be a part of that over the course of the next year. And finally, I wanted to note that Sunday is here on River Day at Gallup Park in Ann Arbor, featuring food trucks and all kinds of exhibitors and activities on the river and bands, including, I think he may have left, the Water Resource Commissioner and his band Hullabaloo is the first band playing on Sunday. So encourage everybody to get out and enjoy the river at Gallup Park.
Thank you, and congratulations on the task force.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Commissioner Sanders?
I think I got tired of being shamed by my fellow commissioners with their reports. I represent the commissioners on the Washtenaw County Roads Commission and I have to say that even though I've not really given reports on their behalf, their meetings are chock-full of information, so much so I don't even know how to delineate what I should bring forward. But I will say I was on the call yesterday, we actually had two meetings yesterday, 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM, and they were sharing information about the cameras that we have throughout the county. If I misquote it, you'll have to just blame the drugs for my wrist. But I believe we now have 144 traffic cameras through, yeah. And, and the one that they pulled up for this particular meeting is the one that I, I am in that intersection a lot. So, I, 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 I don't know how I felt about that. I think they're a good idea, but the thought that they could be looking at the back of my license plate, I wasn't sure about that. But it was, it was very informative. I guess I wanna also tell the general public that they have an opportunity to chat with a road commissioner. There, if you go to their website, you can actually click on a link that tells you how often and who you would be chatting with. And I think that that's very, very innovative. It gives you an opportunity to actually speak with one of the road commissioners. I represent the board, so I'm not considered to be one of their commissioners, but I think that that's a nice touch for people to know that they can reach out to them and get information. They give regular updates on, on road work and traffic work that's going on. And I think that they are very understated and I'm gonna hope to change that to bring you more regular reports, but they really do an excellent job at informing the community about the work that's being done in the county and they're very approachable. So, I just wanted to share that and I can't let Jason and Katie keep making me look there, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Some others, but that one I wanted to highlight.
That was a real meaty one, thank you, Commissioner Sanders. I just wanna clarify too, the, the drug remarks related to Commissioner Sanders' broken her wrist is, and that, that's what that was in reference to? She is experiencing pain and I also, I, I believe that. I also want to make everybody aware that Commissioner Sanders postponed surgery on her wrist to be here for our board retreat, so that I am very grateful for your dedication. All right, Commissioner Somerville?
Thank you. I have a Commission on Aging report. So they have, I know I mentioned that this was in the works at our last meeting, but it's official that they are hosting a Safe Aging Town Hall on June 9th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM at the Ypsilanti Civic Center. So if, if that works for folks, you know, stop by if you can. And then I also just want to, I know that we're working on the mapping that they've asked for and it's also part of our larger, so just wanted to highlight that as still something that they bring up. And then I wanna thank our county administrator for extending the RFP for the ARPA funds related to older adults in our county. So, thank you so much, you like answered me within one minute after that meeting last week, so I appreciate you.
Excellent, anybody else or liaison report, Commissioner Robbie?
Thank you, Chair, this should be a quick one. I just wanted to let folks know, a quick update from the Environmental Council that we are looking at some staffing recommendations that will come back to this body. And there, I believe, in, you know, the resiliency plans that were passed here in previous terms before I came in, there was some language about creating staffing for the Environmental Council and we're finally getting to a place where those job descriptions are starting to be written up and the Environmental Council's looking at those and eventually they will come to this body for approval. So we actually have some staff, I believe it's three positions, that would support the functions of the Environmental Council, our sustainability and resiliency work in the county and help to further what we as a board wanna see happen there. So, hopefully I didn't miss anything, but I think that's kind of the update. Just wanted to put it on everybody's radar to let you know that we're getting to a place where it may come before us soon.
Appreciate it, great, I know people are very excited about that. Anybody else? All right, now how was that for transparency? That was really good, right? You know, very transparent, people have a good sense of what we're doing outside these board meetings, which really are the smallest part of, of the work, right? You tune in, this is the smallest part of what everybody's doing here. I have items to share, but I'll share them during Report of the Chair, so hopefully everybody still has energy and is interested in hearing them at that point. I'm gonna move on to Special Orders of Business, I'm looking for somebody to set, move this resolution to set a public hearing for June 7th at 7 o'clock in the boardroom here to receive public comment on the adoption of a brownfield plan. Those are always interesting, for 300 North Zee Road, anybody? Any discussion? Seeing none? All right, wanna call the roll?
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Labar. Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Excellent, join us on June 7th for public hearing on that. Now I'm gonna open a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed 2023 millage rate. Same rules apply as public comment, you got three minutes. Anybody in the room or online wanna give public comment or join the public hearing? No? I'm closing the public hearing, all right. We have no appointments, might wanna move the consent agenda. Any discussion, sometimes there's discussion on this. Seeing none, this is a voice vote, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? None, all right, moving on to resolutions. Who wants to move the first reading resolutions? I'm giving it to Commissioner Scott for that, excellent liaison report. See, right?
Thank you so much, Chair. Resolutions, we have on the first reading, 91A, a resolution approving the acceptance of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority HUD Home ARP Grants, homelessness prevention program in the amount of $139,673 and the Housing Navigation Program HNP in the amount of $150,000, authorizing the county administrator to sign the grant amendment and contracts related to this award, MDSHA grant funding that is based on Sarah Award grantees. B, a resolution approving the acceptance of the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Emergency Rental Assistance Housing Stability Services Program Grant Amendment in the amount of $518,400 for the calendar year 2023, authorizing the county administrator to sign the grant amendment and contracts related to this award. C, a resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners approve the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration SAMSA grant application and the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic Improvement and Advancement Grant. Those are all a single reading.
First reading.
First reading.
Thank you, is there a second? Anybody wanna pull any for separate consideration? I wanna remind everybody, this is a fantastic opportunity to engage in lively debate about any of these items that we're gonna be voting on today or in the future. It came up during the retreat, you know, we have to create this culture of debate. So there, I, I'm seeing no interest in debating these, this is a voice vote. Oh, what you got for us, Commissioner Robbie?
I'd like to thank the Chair for creating the space for debate.
Yes, thank you, you're very welcome. All right, I, I'm hearing no desire for debate on any of these items and this is a voice vote, so all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, or all, fantastic, final reading, single reading and approval of claims, anybody wanna move that? Commissioner Scott?
Thank you so much, Chair. It's final reading, a resolution pledging the full faith and credit of Washtenaw County for the payment of the bond on the north county line inter-county drain district. B, a resolution ratifying the grant application to the National Center for State Courts Eviction Diversion Initiative for the term beginning September 1st, 2023 and ending August 31st, 2025. Single reading, A, a resolution setting the 2023 Washtenaw County operating millage rate at 6.8343. B, a resolution to amend the bylaws of the Washtenaw Commission on Aging. C, a resolution to honor Ypsilanti resident Virginia Bassler's 100th birthday, editorialized, happy birthday. D, a resolution recognizing May 2023 as Older Americans Month. E, a resolution recognizing the 20th anniversary of Growing Hope and four, approval of claims.
Is there a second? Anybody wanna pull any for separate consideration? No lively debate here, interesting, very interesting. Oh, you, you, yeah, yeah, so discussion on any of the items then? Commissioner Somerville?
Hi, yes, thank you so much, there are two items on here that honor some organizations and people in Ypsilanti. So, many of you are probably familiar with Growing Hope, it needs a huge need in Ypsilanti and provides access to not just fresh fruits and vegetables, but just like getting people interested in urban farming and thinking about how they can take the, the tools and resources provided there and, and utilize those at home. So, it's a great space in the city, it's walkable, and they've been great partners in our community. So I'm really glad to see them reach 20 years and I hope for many, many more. So thank you all and I hope you, you know, I'm glad, seems like this is not gonna be, not supported by the board, so I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Anybody else comments about anything? This is probably also a nice opportunity to mention that they're having their anniversary party, continue, go ahead. No, I, I could do, okay, great, they're having their anniversary party on this Sunday, I believe, at, no, it's not this Sunday? It is this Sunday, it's supposed to be on my calendar, oh, there it is, 4 o'clock, 4 to 7 o'clock. Assuming we pass this resolution, we all sign it, you're gonna take it there, I believe.
Yeah, we have a, we're taking, the signed copy's gonna be framed, yes, yeah, I'm taking it, you're welcome to join me.
Everyone's welcome to join, should be a fun time by all. Any other? Commissioner Sanders?
Just additional congratulations to Growing Hope. I was involved with them 20 years ago when they were, before they even had a building and then rejoined on their board a couple of years ago and I just stepped down last year because of these responsibilities on this board. And so I'm just excited to see all of the growth that has occurred with that organization and the work that they are doing in the community. So just excited for them and appreciative of the resolution.
Very nice, anybody else on anything? Oh, okay, I do have an item, so the Commission on Aging bylaws, I might need someone to answer a question for me on this one. There was some discussion about, so this is increasing the size of the Commission on Aging and I think there was some discussion about making the Commissioner position no, not voting. Is that, that, is that accurate? Go ahead, Commissioner Somerville.
Hi, thank you, yeah, so as you all know, I walked into this in January of this year and I was not involved with a lot of the deeper conversations around the bylaws changes, but I walked in and it was explained to me the need for the addition. Um, changes, but I walked in and it was explained to me the need for the additional at-large members was to increase, um, diversity on the board. Um, and then I honestly didn't get much background on the changing of the commissioner role to non-voting, um. When I, and then I guess when I submitted the requested changes that the body asked for, um, that was when I inquired to the Chair of the Commission, and she indicated that, that maybe you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Machewski was part of those, so we didn't include that.
Yes, not in here. I just, that it was talked about. So it's not, it's not.
It's not in here, and I think, I mean, for me personally, like, I kind of felt like, well, I want to have a role, at least me and maybe future commissioners want to have a voice at that table. And I don't know what was talked about before my time, but it did kind of raise a little bit of a flag, so I'm just showing that. And if you want to, uh, provide additional commentary, that would be.
Commissioner Machewski?
Yeah, it was so, uh, when the, uh, desire of increasing the diversity of the Commission on Aging was being discussed about a year ago. Um, several ideas were kind of put forward about how to achieve that. Uh, one of them would be to just simply add seats, I think is the proposal is today, uh, to have more at-large general appointments. Um, one of the things that I threw out at the time was considering the idea of converting the commissioner's seat to another at-large seat to give another opportunity or a greater opportunity to do that. Um, I had thrown it kind of in the discussion as just one of the options for them to consider. Um, but seeing that the before us today is, does not include that option, I think, good. Uh, and, yeah, I think they, they've come forward with some, so a good proposal here, and, you know, I look forward to voting for it.
I look forward to it, too. And it's a good amount of lively debate on there. Any other comments about anything? Yeah, you got some. Go ahead. Commissioner Robbie?
Actually, nevermind.
Okay. This is a roll call vote. Let's do it.
Commissioner LeBarre.
Yes.
Commissioner Light.
Yes.
Commissioner Machewski.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbie. Commissioner Sanders. Commissioner Scott.
Yes.
Commissioner Somerville.
Yes.
Commissioner Beaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hodge.
Yes. All items passed. Excellent. We're going to move right into a report from the county administrator. I think we have a fantastic presentation lined up.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, we, our auditor is slated, Nathan Baldorman is slated to be here at 7:30. Is he here? Okay.
It is 7:28.
It, well, he, he has two minutes to walk through that door. Uh, in, in the interim, I would like to take just a, an opportunity to say the, uh, annual finance, fina- financial statements are at your place setting. And want to thank Tina and, uh, Catherine for their, their teams are phenomenal. In fact, a few of them are in the audience today. I think I see Marie and Brady. Would you guys please stand? It's a a ta- an opportunity for you guys to take a bow. We, we do this every year. We don't think too much about it, but this work doesn't happen without your hard work and dedication. So Marie, I, I see Brady back there, Thomas and John. Could you please stand just a, for a minute? Thank you. Thank you very much. And to this board, obviously your, your stewardship around the budget and, uh, the work of this organization uh, is important. We don't get here every year with the very few findings without the, the direction that you all plot for us. And then lastly, to the organization, thank you guys for everything that you've done to get us through this year. And as you can tell, I am trying to fill air, hoping that our auditor will walk through the door at any moment.
Do you want to, you have a question about the report, Commissioner LeBarre? Yeah.
I, I could buy us some time if you want.
I'll just, uh, do the report, my report, and then I'll just talk until the auditors come. That's after my report, though. Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Let me do my thing here. All right, great. Uh, so I did a number of what I would define as interesting things since the last meeting. Uh, one of the items was I visited Safe House. And I got to learn a lot about the wide variety of services that Safe House provides other than the shelter itself. I know it's been an ongoing discussion around challenges related to not all of the beds being in use, and that's in large part due to staffing challenges. Uh, so, you know, Safe House is hiring, putting the plug out right now, camera, plug is, Safe House is hiring. Uh, if they had more staff, they'd be able to make use of all of the beds. But in the, other than that, they do provide a lot of other services, which I think are frequently not talked about because the shelter is what takes up, I think, most of the air and most of the conversation. Uh, so they provide legal support services. They have services for youth. Uh, and they do a variety of other crisis support services and serving, um, families that, and survivors that are not housed in the shelter. So I want to make sure people have a good understanding of that, particularly as we try to move through and strengthen Safe House. Um, people need to know that there are other services that are being provided there. And what else is interesting? Uh, I, let's see. I'm also the Chair of the State Commission on Community Action Economic Opportunity, and we had the conference last week, the state association puts that on, uh, moderated a panel there of community action agency directors, uh, and they talked about a lot of the great work that they're doing and, uh, and many places across the state are struggling with the same things that we're struggling, particularly around housing. So we're not alone in that particular challenge. Uh, at our meetings, we had our, um, commission meeting right after that, and we had people from SEDOM come to present on children's savings accounts. So, you know, that we've moved forward with launching our countywide children's savings accounts program. Uh, and I think it's going to be eventually looked at as a great model within the state, us having a countywide one. We learned a lot about other models, uh, across the state and outside of the state, um, but people are very impressed with what we're doing here in Washtenaw County. And we are kicking that off this month. I believe there's this Friday, uh, there would be a kickoff at Erickson Elementary. So we're going to be talking to some kids about ec- their economic future and the investment that Washtenaw County and everyone else is going to make in their future. So looking forward to that. Uh, what else is interesting? Oh, we had a great meeting here. We had a great meeting here about the Eastside Recreation and Community Center, Eastside to center and recre- see, I messed up my own thing. Yeah, messed up my own thing. Great meeting here with, uh, representatives from Superior Township, the City of Ypsilanti. We had two people from Ypsilanti Township join us virtually. Congresswoman Dingle joined us virtually, too. Uh, we talked about our commitment to seeing the project to the finish line. Uh, Senator, I, I'm just not done yet. Senator Irwin was there, Representative, uh, Jimmy Wilson Jr. Lots of other people. Lots, many, many people were there. The Y was there. Uh, we, so we talked about getting it to the finish line, and then Commissioner Somerville had a really great idea about how do we formalize this partnership with the other local governments, and we made an ask during the session that we draft a model resolution uh, that they will take to their bodies to express their commitment to the project. I know that's been a challenge over the years, particularly with one township taking back land that was originally supposed to be part of the project. So we want to get away from that. Uh, Superior Township in the City of Ypsilanti expressed some interest in bringing that up. Of course, they can't speak on behalf of their board. Uh, so we're going to work, uh, get Ashley to work with us on getting that model resolution and get it to the two townships in the city and ask that they get that passed. Almost want to think of it as, you know, we want to continue having these meetings as we get it closer and closer, but it's like a ticket to keep staying at the table, right? Like, say that you're committed, so we can get this to the, to the finish line. Uh, then there was, that's, there's Wednesday. Anything else? I think that's, uh, oh, peace officer recognition. So, you know, at our last board meeting, we passed, uh, a resolution to honor, uh, police week and peace officers more broadly. I went and presented the resolution at the annual event uh, held by the Washtenaw 100. That concludes, no, it does not conclude my report. Actually, a really interesting thing happened this morning. Uh, so Elise is not here, Elise is not here, but we had a Washtenaw New Human Services Partnership Equity Summit. So this was, uh, held in partnership between the University of Michigan School of Social Work, because they're doing a lot of the, uh, that program evaluation for us, and our team at the county, OCD was at, Morgan, where at Morgan? Morgan was here a little while ago. She just left. Morgan presented, did a great presentation about New Human Services Partnership, uh, and then we did a panel uh, that Elise was on that I moderated. One of our panelists was not able to be there, so then that opened me up to take more questions moderating it. Uh, it was a great conversation. I think people were really happy with the work. It was a room full of the service providers that we have historically funded. Uh, we had some great conversations about how do we move this human services, you know, challenge that we are facing and the funding situation that we're facing. There were questions from the audience such as, how do we make sure the private donors or potential donors get more involved? How do we hold them accountable? You know, it's hard, right? They, you know, they don't have a Board of Commissioners meeting where you can go talk to Blue Cross and ask them to commit some funding to the Washtenaw Health Plan or Michigan Medicine. So, uh, that came up. I brought that up. And, and here we are. So it's been a good day. Uh, people were really impressed with a lot of what Elise had to share around the work that's being done in the racial equity office. Uh, and that's a great, it's a great place to stop. Everybody's looking at me like, do you want me to stop at this point? Uh, is our auditor here?
Our auditor is, what, about five minutes away now? And, uh, we...
I can talk five more minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to move on to items. Items for current of future discussion. Commissioner Beaman? You sure about Celine? Maybe save that one for you. That's a good, sure thing.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Chair. Um, I just wanted to say a huge thanks to everyone who was involved in our racial equity and social justice town hall, Administrator Joe, uh, Elise Asbury Payne, uh, our prosecutor, is he still here? Ellie Sabat was, uh, in attendance, Derek Jackson, Chair Hodge, uh, was also joined by, um, fellow commissioners, Scott Machewski, Sanders. Um, it was in the City of Celine, uh, our town hall, and it was attended by not only local residents who wanted to learn about the great work that we're doing, but also we had, um, representatives, elected representatives from Bridgewater Township, Pittsfield Township, City of Celine, Manchester Township, Sharon Township, and the City of Myland. So this was a really great discussion. We had a lot of, um, wonderful conversations, and, uh, everyone was so appreciative of the time. So I just want to thank everyone for all of the work that they put into, um, this piece, Ashley, Andrew, everyone. Um, and it was just very, very well received. So thank you so much.
I believe CBS Detroit picked it up.
Yes.
It was on TV.
Yeah.
Yep, your, your segment made it, Commissioner Beaman. Mine, mine didn't. That's, that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, all right. Anybody else? Commissioner Robbie, you had a thing. Go for it.
I did have a thing, actually two things that I just wanted to quickly mention. Um, the first is, you know, we just voted on our millage rate, and what I was about to raise my hand to say earlier, but decided to wait till after the vote to say it is, um, obviously, we, you know, y- you can notice in the, in the board packet how much of a, you know, rollback we've had from the original millage, um, and the impact that that has on our operations. Um, and I think that that's something that we all need to be very aware of. Um, so I know that that was an item that was on our retreat agenda that we did not get to was the item of, you know, uh, future funding opportunities. So I really hope that we can delve into that um, in the future, because really, all the great things that we talked about doing, not going to be able to do any of them if we don't have the money to do it. And as we look at, you know, that heavily rollback number and ongoing revenue into the future, uh, this is, this is going to be the discussion that we have to have in order to have, I mean, we had more money, we could, you know, absolutely, make, make all kinds of great things happen, um, including everything that we just talked about. So want to make sure that that's on the agenda for a future, for a future conversation. Um, that was the first thing I wanted to say. The second, quick note on the area agency on aging piece, this is kind of dredging up something from the Wayback Machine, but, um, you know, we were talking about commissioner, like, voting, non-voting position. I didn't want to muddy the waters before the vote because I was fine with voting for it, but, um, I just, it just makes me think again that if the, if commissions, including the Commission on Aging, are having votes, um, it seems to me that those should be, um, n- not virtual meetings to comply with the Open Meetings Act, and that, to me, it was the emphasis that there is voting happening at these commission meetings. Um, and so to me is, uh, argument for us to move those meetings to be in person with a quorum and posted. So I just wanted to make sure to say that. I don't necessarily want to open a debate, but I wanted to make sure to put it out there.
I mean.
If it opens a debate.
We would love a lively debate.
That's right. We're, you know, we haven't had a debate yet tonight, and we want a debate.
Right. Well, I would say, uh, not necessarily to create a debate, but I was hoping we'd get to that revenue generation piece, uh, because Commissioner Sanders had a really interesting idea that I was going to bring up if she didn't. Uh, you wanted to say something about the parking lot? Our parking lot? Do you want me to say it? Commissioner Sanders had this idea, because you know, okay, you can park in our parking lot for free on the weekends. Commissioner Sanders says we should charge people as a way to generate revenue, right? I don't mean in, I, I, the, the point made it look more aggressive than it was. Uh, I think it's a great idea. I mean, it's an interesting idea. Worth exploring.
Yeah, we have talked about that item over, uh, on, on a number of occasions over the years, and, uh, there's a lot to unpack there. I think I'll, I'll stop there.
Well, yeah, this would have been a great retreat topic, but there's only so much time. Commissioner Robbie, you want to?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just quickly say, I think, I think I, I agree generally with the concept of utilizing the, our assets to generate more revenue. And I think there are opportunities with that parking lot to do that. I will say that doing, charging for parking every weekend and in the evenings, for historical context, we've gotten a lot of pushback from the businesses around that are concerned about, a lot of them are small businesses, and they're concerned about the impact in the evening. And they, they were even concerned about, because remember that we were, the, the lot wasn't opening until six o'clock. Um, and they wanted us to push the lot opening to 5:30 when county staff leave, and so that was a whole thing. We moved it to 5:30. So there was an additional half an hour that people could come and shop at the businesses, the People's Food Co-op, the Birkenstock Store, the Record St- uh, Store. Um, and so I think we just need to balance, I agree that, yeah, we need to take in revenue. Maybe we can use it as an event space even. Um, and like rent it out to different groups on special weekends to do events there and stuff like that. I think there's great opportunities, but we just need to be cognizant of the business component there, too.
Yep. You want, Commissioner Sanders, want to say anything about your idea?
I think it's a good idea.
I, I just felt like, you know, we, we have a lot of demands on our resources. Um, and that is an asset that we own, and it doesn't mean that it has to break the bank. Um, I am not a proponent of having to pay for parking, working for an institution that, you know, has, um, yeah, they, there's different terminology. You could say outsourcing. They don't like that term, but, um, no longer owns the rights to their parking. Uh, but I do think that there is a, there's a happy medium to how we could do it and not be a, a complete burden on the folks that would have to pay. It could be reasonable. It could even be a special rate, but that is a way to generate, it is a way to generate revenue that we could utilize for any particular something that would still benefit the public, if that makes sense. Um, so not unlike the cannabis revenue that we are targeting for certain, you know, areas that need support. Um, it's something that we could at least look at, um, because even when that lot fills up or our lots fill up, you still got to park somewhere, right? So it's just a thought. I mean, it's an asset that we own, and, you know, residents, please don't flood my email with complaints about that.
So Commissioner, I'll just say that we'll, we're evaluating that as a part of the space plan. All of our, our surface lots will be, uh, a part of that evaluation. So stay tuned there. Uh, and, uh, since we're still under the administrator's report and our auditor still is not here, to the young man from Myland who wants to learn more about gover- government, this seat is traditionally hot. Tonight is hotter than normal. So, uh, I just wanted to let you know what I'm experiencing tonight. We do have a, a professional comedian in the audience, so we might have to ask him to come up. Uh, as well as our contingency plan was to determine who was going to sing, either Tina, Catherine, or myself. So, uh, we're running out of air here, guys.
Oh, we could keep it going. There might be other items for current of future discussion. Commissioner Scott? Oh, no, oh, sorry, Commissioner. I did, she did raise her hand earlier. I'm sorry.
Hey, yeah, I, Ypsie Pride is coming up on the first Friday of June, June 2nd. So come to Ypsie. It's in Depot Town this year because of the construction downtown. It's a good time. It happens to be my front yard. So if you're down in Depot Town, just let me know.
Is there free parking at your apartment?
Um, so actually, actually, my twin brother does happen to live in my apartment building, and he will be at work at that time, so I will have one parking space for someone. So just let me know. Charging $20 per hour.
Excellent. Commissioner Scott?
Thanks. I'm really just trying to buy us time. I want to let you know that this past weekend, it was the, um, Midwest Championships for rowing, um, held now at Kensington Metro Park. Um, and, uh, Skyline was the three-peat champion for sculling and second on the overall combined points. We had a 15th place from Huron, 16th from Pioneer, 20th from Chelsea, 24th from Father Gabriel Richard, 28th from Green Hills, and 44th from Celine. I think if you looked at all, there were 57 teams from all across the Midwest. I think if we got to look at county points, if they did a point progression that way, we totally would have been in first way above everybody else, even those powerhouse Chicago schools. So way to go Washtenaw County.
Excellent. I believe our star guest has arrived. Our auditor is here.
Yeah.
All right. Welcome.
Nathan, I, I am so happy to see you. You have no idea how happy I am to see you.
Wow, my last presentation, I emptied the room when I arrived, so.
Typically, typically, when the auditor's not here, there are problems. I hope we, we can do a little bit better than that.
Well, welcome, Nathan. We are very excited for your presentation. You are the final item on our agenda.
All right, um, well, I will be brief. Um, is what everybody always wants the auditor, to hear from the auditors, but, um, thank you for your time. Uh, I 94 Construction is great. Uh, it's a perfect time of night for, uh, there's not ever anybody, any, needing to get anywhere after five o'clock on an expressway, so, um, tonight, I just want to introduce myself, Nate Walderman. Uh, I am the principal, uh, on the engagement. I took over for Stephen Bland. Uh, Stephen Bland, um, you had had him as your lead auditor for a couple of years, uh, and he took over the COO role, uh, at Raymond. Um, and so, uh, I have stepped in, but I've been, I have been here before, several years ago, presenting, uh, the Act for Award in, in the past, um, and again, very familiar, uh, with your job, so, um, tonight, uh, I just wanted to, again, thank you, uh, for your time. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with the county this year. This year, uh, as always, we, we, there, there were definitely challenges as we were going through things, uh, with the audit, uh, as with any year, uh, with just the, the size and the volume of what's there, but, uh, the team did a great job, uh, working through things, um, your team, uh, you know, in, in finalizing the reports. Um, we were able to, to issue a report. What I have in my hands are one of, you know, 10 different reports that are issued. All of those issued were issued with unmodified opinions, uh, so a clean opinion, uh, on, on all of those. This year, um, we did not issue, or we did not implement any new standards because you did that last year. You actually implemented GASB 87 on leases early last year. Um, so this year was kind of that break, uh, before we get to implement a new standard next year, uh, GASB 96. In terms of, uh, the, the findings and, and the reports, we did have, uh, just one finding this year related to audit adjustments. Anytime that something comes to our attention during the audit, um, that we end up having, uh, ends up resulting in an adjustment based on something that we find we have to evaluate that. There was, there were a couple of those items this year. Um, but those were corrected, and what you have in the financial statements are correct. So, uh, other than that, we didn't have any management letter comments. Um, and it was clean. So, uh, again, thank you for your time, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you do have on the audit.
Thank you, Nate. Question is Commissioner Robbie? Nope, okay. Do, do we have, uh, any questions for Nate?
I came from Centerville, Michigan, is, is where I was at from here.
We got to have some questions.
That, that was my other presentation.
Oh, I'm so sorry. We should have zoomed them in.
We don't have to have any questions. This is the audit, so.
Well, if there are no, if there are no questions, uh, are there really no questions? I'm going to move on. Last call, none. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Nate.
Yep.
Moving on to pending items, there are none. I would look for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor? Get on out of here.